Welcome, everyone, to the House Committee on Judiciary and Hawaiian Affairs. It is Thursday, February 27th at 2:00 PM here in Conference Room 325. Thanks, everyone, for being here to provide testimony. Appreciate that. We actually do a better job as legislators when we receive testimony. So you're part of the process. Thanks for being here. If those who are providing testimony, I'd request that you keep your testimony to about two minutes. I'll ask you to summarize at that point. And if you're testifying on Zoom, please keep yourself muted and your video off while waiting to testify, and then again after your testimony is complete. You can use the Zoom chat function to communicate with our technical staff to try to address technical issues. If you are disconnected, don't panic. Just reconnect as soon as you can, and we'll try to fit you in to provide your testimony when you return, if possible. In the event of a network failure or the power going off in the building here, we will reschedule and make sure we post appropriate notice so everyone knows when we're going to be having another hearing or decision-making. If you're testifying on Zoom, please do not use any trademarked or copyrighted images that kicks us off of YouTube, and we don't like that because we want to be visible to the public and want everyone in the public to be able to see what we're doing here and why we make the decisions we make. Please conduct yourself with aloha, and please refrain from profanity or uncivil behavior, I ask, as always. It's okay. I say, as always, it's okay to disagree, but please let's not be disagreeable. Okay. First up, we have House Bill 211 relating to stream maintenance. This measure requires the counties to remove and dispose of personal property as part of the maintenance of channels, stream beds, stream banks, and drainage ways. It clarifies that personal property stored in or near a channel, stream bed, stream bank, or drainage ways for a continuous period of more than 24 hours shall be deemed abandoned property which may be disposed of by the state or county. First up, we have Department of Land and Natural Resources, Mr. Hirokawa. Please proceed.
Thank you. Chair, vice chair, members of the committee, Ian Hirokawa with DLNR. We'll stand on our comments, our testimony offering comments. We do want to point out that we are requesting an amendment because how the bill is written now, HRS 46-11-11.5 is really focused on giving the counties, one, the responsibility and the authority for cleaning and, you know, I mean, clearing out the streams and flood control. And the way the bill was amended, it kind of loops in the state. It says either the state or the county can remove property, and what we're concerned about is DLNR having to remove abandoned property on streams it has no ownership on. So either county-owned or privately-owned streams. So we're requesting an amendment to clarify that, you know, basically that the, with respect to the state or the county, whatever entity has jurisdiction or ownership of that stream is responsible, I mean, or at least the state, and otherwise, you know, the county can enforce against a private owner. The other thing we're asking for is, you know, requesting that funds be appropriated to assist with the cleanup because, you know, as for us, it's kind of a, it's not really budgeted in our operating, and our already cleanup efforts are already very expensive, so our present cleanup. So we are requesting that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hirokawa. Does Mr. Suji want to provide comments as well?
Nope.
Okay. Thank you very much for being here, Russell. Next, we have written testimony in opposition from the city and county of Honolulu. Testimony, written testimony in support from two individuals and one person who said they wished to testify on Zoom, Taran Dizon, not present in support. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on House Bill 211? If not, questions, members? Any questions? Mr. Hirokawa, maybe real quick questions, just as a way to educate the public and the members here. My understanding is that streams are owned either by the property owner, the private property owner, because it's often the boundary goes up to the middle of the stream on many cases, sometimes not. And then, so, and the state owns some streams. So the bottom line is that whoever owns the stream is responsible for cleaning it. Is that accurate?
Yes, we believe so. It's just that the county through 46-11.5 has the authority to, if like an owner, like a private owner is derelict in it, they can go ahead, clean it, and then enforce for the cost later, but yes.
Do they already have that authority?
Yes, yes, but it is the responsibility.
So I want to make that clear to everyone. The county already has the authority that if a private property owner is derelict and taking care of, and it, the stream, and it's full of stuff, that they have the authority to enter, clean it, and then follow up and seek recompense or whatever from the private property owner?
Correct. That is an existing statute.
Existing statute.
As written, yes.
Got it. Okay. So that's important for everyone to know. And, but in the case of, you know, private property, people who own property adjacent to a stream, if they were to look at their TMK map, and they, that would instruct them as to what part of the stream they own, and then they would be responsible for cleaning the part of the stream they own. Is that correct?
Correct. I mean, well, I would say either a TMK map or probably more specifically their deed, because a lot of times.
Their deed, okay.
Yeah, it could describe either to the, the middle of the stream or the bank, and maybe the other side has, and of course, the stream can meander too, so that could affect it.
Yes.
But, yeah, I would say TMK might, but I think better the deed would more specifically describe.
Okay. So the members of the public who are interested in this, if they're, if they're concerned about a particular area that's part of a stream that's got stuff in it, if they were to try to figure out who is responsible for it, it would be in the deeds of those property owners that are in that area along the stream?
Yes, it should be all listed, described in there.
Okay. And then one final question. This whole thing about, part of the bill says that, you know, anything, personal property that is stored in or near the channel shall be deemed abandoned property, may be disposed by the state or county. If I remember correctly, and I think the county has this in their testimony, we can't just throw it out. There's, there's been a recent court case in the last several years saying that it's got to be stored, and then that individual, let's say a houseless individual, and they've got stuff that they've been using there, they, we can't, we can't just throw it out. Are you familiar with that case?
I, I've heard of it. I think, I'm more, I guess, with my familiarity is more is that in 171, I believe it's 31.5, it, it describes what's needed for state lands, you know, in terms of 31.5, I believe is a section, but it does describe what is needed in terms of, you know, providing notice that this area is subject to cleanup and then.
Okay.
You know, removing and then storing the property. I'm not clear exactly about what.
That's okay.
They'll do for private, yeah.
That's okay. I appreciate it. Thanks very much, Mr. Hirokawa.
Thank you.
I would refer members to, it's okay, you're, you're Paul. I would refer members to the testimony from the city and county of Honolulu that is listed on, from Gene Albano, from the Department of Facility Maintenance, where in the testimony saying that this bill is in direct conflict with the federal court stipulation reached in part of the American Civil Liberties Union lawsuit. Accordingly, the city, and they quote the particular 13-19.3 and 13-19.4, requires written notification of abandoned property and storage of personal property rather than immediate disposal. Per this stipulation, the strict, the city strictly adheres to the issuance of written notice and storage procedures for impounded personal property and must list on the city website the location of the planned enforcement area by 3:00 PM the previous day. So I think that's important for everybody to understand that that's how the city is approaching this, so that they're not in violation of the court stipulation. I just want to make that clear, because the city is not, the city and county representative is not here to present that. Okay. Let's go on to the next measure, unless you got a question, Representative Mizi. I was figuring you did.
Yeah, I did. I'm sorry I missed that call. Thank you, Chair. Question for DLNR, please. Simple question, hopefully. I just wanted to confirm that as far as all of the streams that are being considered, the ownership is clear. There's no confusion about, it's clearly designated, who's the owner and who has responsibility over any, any length of stream?
I think generally we're pretty clear, but I don't want to say that 100% of the time, there's always, sometimes it could be always some question, but I think generally we've been able to ascertain, yeah, if there's a question.
This is Russell Suji, who.
Russell Suji, Land Division Administrator. I was just going to try to answer your question. It's got to be stream by stream, and it has to be checked out that way, because I just wanted to make, make it known to everyone that it's just dependent on the deed. So some of the deeds of the property that abut streams go all the way to the other side of the bank and bankman, which means you have the whole stream. Some of them go toward, a lot of them go toward the middle, and so both abutting properties on both sides of the streams often own the stream. And then they'll have, you'll have somewhere they don't own it, and it only goes to the boundary line, so in a lot of those cases, it's deemed, like arguably that the state has some jurisdiction normally over those type of streams.
So it varies per parcel, so you really have to look at the deed.
Yeah. Okay. It's not a general standard.
Understood. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Appreciate, thanks very much, Mr. Suji, Mr. Hirokawa. This is a good learning, educational experience for everybody. Okay. Let's move on to the next measure. House Bill 502 relating to land use. This measure temporarily allows each county by resolution of its county council to petition for the redistricting of land from an agricultural district to a rural district through the Land Use Commission's declaratory ruling process. First up, we have Office of Planning and Sustainable Development.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Aaron Setogah for the Office of Planning and Sustainable Development. OPSD stands on its written testimony which supports the intent of this bill but expresses some concerns.
I would, usually what I do, rather than having anyone just stand on their testimony, I ask them to highlight what are the parts of the testimony, and for you, I'd like you to highlight what your concerns are, and you do make a recommendation. Please proceed.
Yes. One of the concerns is that the, the timeframe for these processing, this types of, of district boundary amendment from ag to ruler is, we think it's too short, especially if you're considering that the LUC might have to do a rule change. Also, we've been, it's understanding that for, for example, the Big Island, the Big Island Planning Department would have a very difficult time informing every, all of the adjacent landowners in a timely manner to process these things. So those are the kind of issues we are.
Thank you. But I also see that you strongly recommend, OPSD strongly recommends the establishment of a county plan-based district boundary amendment process that enables the redistricting of lands in conformance with adopted county general development and community plans. That's a significant recommendation. I wanted you to highlight that.
Certainly.
Do you have anything more to say about that?
Yes. We, we think that giving the counties a more permanent process or ability to do this process would be a lot more efficient to conform. There are 22 state land use review show that the number of parcels not within the counties, that are within the county's growth areas but are not in the state urban district. So this would, if we came up with a permanent process, it would be more effective for them to align the, the state district boundaries with their county plans.
Yes, and I appreciate that your testimony also says you stand ready to assist in the development of legislative measures for a county plan-based district boundary amendment that aligns and balances county and state land use policies and development and resource management interests. So you're volunteering to assist us.
Yes, we are.
Okay. I just want to make sure everyone hears that. Okay. Thank you very much, sir.
You're welcome.
Okay. Next testimony is from the Department of Agriculture. Mr. Gates, welcome. Please proceed.
Aloha, Chair. Aloha, members of the committee. Cedric Gates here on behalf of the Department of Agriculture. The department stands on its written testimony, offering comments and a recommendation, and our recommendation is that we respectfully ask that the counties who take advantage of the provision of this measure, should it be enacted, to consider concurrent revisions of their respective ordinances, plans, and rules affecting the subdivisions or other means of land partitioning of agriculture lands as well to create unity amongst the laws. Aloha.
Okay. Thank you very much. Next, we have the Land Use Commission. That was a big sigh, Randy.
Aloha, Kaku.
Aloha.
Scott Derrickson, Chief Planner, State Land Use Commission. We'll also stand on our testimony, supporting the intent of the bill. And I guess I'll highlight that this bill is really aimed at legacy agricultural subdivisions that were created, in some cases, prior to the state land use commission, uh, state land use law in the, in 1961. I guess, in a way, this is, this is really a county thing. It's not something that the Land Use Commission initiated. This is kind of a cleanup of these small lot ag subdivisions. As Office of Planning did indicate, we will have to enact rules. We'll have to do rule amendment process in order to make this work. That takes time.
Thank you. That's important. I mean, you highlighted the important things in your testimony. I mean, you, you highlighted the important things in your testimony. You also, in your last paragraph, you, you point to OPSD's role in this process, so the Members will take a look at your written testimony for any more details. Thank you very much, Scott.
You're welcome.
Good to see you. Next, we have written testimony support from Heather Kimball, Hawaii County Council, comments from Hawaii Farm Bureau, and testimony and support from Hawaii Realtors, Lindsay Garcia, and testimony and support from Maui Chamber of Commerce. Is there anyone else here wishing to testify on House Bill 502? Go ahead, Ms. Angela.
Angela Melody Young, CARES, in strong support. So I'm not an attorney, but as I read the very last subsection, I think that's what it's called. So, letter D. The Land Use Commission shall adopt rules pursuant to Chapter 91 Hawaii Vice Statute to implement this act. CARES's proposed amendment after hearing the discussion is to be considerate of the county's process after hearing ag's testimony. You probably want to put into the law, and of course, I'm not a lawyer, but I think this is appropriate, letter D. The Land Use Commission shall adopt rules pursuant to Chapter 91 Hawaii Vice Statute and the four counties' land use ordinances to implement this act. So if the state would like to check with an attorney, because I'm not an attorney, but.
Thank you.
Yeah, just speaking to the technicalities and specificity of this bill.
Thank you, Ms. Young.
I think it'd be very helpful to consult with the counties and their attorneys. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to testify in House Bill 502? House Draft 1. If not, questions, Members? Nope. Seeing none, thank you very much. We will move on to the next measure. House Bill 510, House Draft 1 relating to Declaration of Water Shortage and Emergency. This measure amends the conditions, manner, and areas in which the Commission on Water Resource Management can declare and provide notice of water shortages and emergencies. First up, we have Department of Land and Natural Resources. Wow, the Chair is here. Wow.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Welcome.
Good, good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, and Members of the Committee. Don Chang on behalf of, in this case, it's the Commission on Water Resource Management. We stand in very strong support of this measure, and we're going to stand on our written testimony. We believe that this, this measure will help seaworm more, we can, it will permit us to address issues on non-water management designated areas, so it's a really important tool for us. Thank you very much. And we're available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Chair Chang. Next, we have the Board of Water Supply, Honolulu. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, and Members of the Committee. My name is Kathy Mitchell. I'm with the Board of Water Supply. Board of Water Supply strongly supports House Bill 510, HD1, as it requires the Commission on Water Resource Management to adopt rules, formulate a plan for implementation, adopt a reasonable system of permit classification, and set criteria for determining when a water shortage exists. We, we like to be, we hope that the, when they go out to adopt the rules, that it's transparent and they welcome the stakeholder participation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we've received written testimony in opposition from the Land Use Research Foundation, written testimony in opposition from the Hawaii Farm Bureau, written testimony in support from the Climate Change and Health Working Group, and written testimony in support from an individual. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on House Bill 510? House Draft 1. If not, questions, Members?
I have a question.
Representative Mizu? Please proceed.
Thank you, Chair. It's challenging to keep up with your pace here, but the question is regarding, do I have anyone from Land Use Research Foundation of Hawaii?
Nope. Not here.
Okay. Can I ask a question to DLNR, please? I'm not, I'm not sure if you're familiar with the testimony from the Land Use Research Foundation of Hawaii, but they, they are in opposition to this bill, and even though well-intended, their concern is, I guess, overextending the Commission's authority outside of water management areas and maybe creating a unilateral type decision-making process that would alienate certain people or even unintended consequences negatively. So could you comment on that, please?
And thank you very much, Representative. I've got Ryan Emato with our seaworm branch here, and I'm going to ask him to provide any comments, and then I may provide you an additional comment.
And just for the public, if they don't know what seaworm is, this is not an annalid that lives in the ocean. This is the Commission on Water Resources Management.
Thank you very much.
Please proceed.
Yeah. Good afternoon. Ryan Emato with the Commission on Water Resource Management. So I understand their opposition. I, you know, I think that this allows us to manage emergency situations in non-management areas, and we would go through rulemaking, so LRF would have the opportunity to comment on the process as we go through rulemaking.
And if, if I may also add, so for example, in Lahaina, it's not designated a water management area at the time of the fire, but now it is. But at that time, when we had the fires, we could not regulate the private purveyors because it was not a management designated area. So we believe that this bill will provide us to more timely respond in the case of emergencies, and we think it is necessary as, while the, while the intent of seaworm was to have the whole state perhaps designated as a water management area, we're not there yet. So again, I think it does help us, provide us an additional tool to more timely respond in the events of, of emergencies.
Okay. Thank you. Did I hear you say that there will be a, a public input process?
Yeah, through the rulemaking to adopt the.
All right. Chair, can I ask one more question?
Sure.
Can you also address Hawaii Farm Bureau's, I, I don't think they're here, but they submitted testimony of their, their concern that water might be shut off or, or reduced to a disagreeable amount that would affect, you know, their agricultural production, and obviously, they have concerns of needing a steady source of water. So how would they be protected in their operations?
Yeah, and that's a good concern, too. I think we need to look at it, we, we're looking at it from a water resource perspective. And so, you know, I think there are going to have to be balances between where we cut back certain categories of use, which is why I think we're, I think the language in the bill proposes like a permit classification so that we can figure out, like, I, I don't think it's necessarily spelled out in the bill, but we can figure out a classification whereby, you know, certain maybe non-public trust uses might be cut back at a certain percentage versus agricultural uses, and I think we can address it that way.
And in addition, Rep., I think it would also be the rulemaking process would permit an opportunity for us to hear the concerns of the agricultural industry and make appropriate considerations when, in the actual implementation.
All right. That's good to hear. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Certainly. Thank you very much to the testifiers. Thank you, Members. Let's move on to the next measure. House Bill 511, House Draft 1 relating to public lands. This measure provides that a survey of the land to be set aside shall not be a condition precedent to the setting aside of public lands to any department or agency of the state. First up, we have the Hawaii Department of Agriculture with comments.
Aloha, Chair. Vice Chair, Members of the Committee, Cedric Gates on behalf of the Department of Agriculture. The department stands on its written testimony, offering comments and consideration. The Department of Agriculture acknowledges that not requiring a survey of lands to be set aside will expedite the setting aside of public lands between state departments and agencies and will conserve government resources. We do want to be, if you guys can consider that the funding for these surveys after those lands have been transferred will still be needed to be done, and that funding will be required. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have the Department of Land and Natural Resources.
Good afternoon, Chair and Vice Chair, Members of the Committee. Don Chang with the Department of Land and Natural Resources. I think many of you are familiar with Act 90, and this bill is really designed to help facilitate that. Last year, we came to ask you for $1.5 million just to do the surveys. We have one particular parcel that's costing us a quarter of a million dollars to survey. And under the current law, we have to complete the survey before we can actually complete the executive order. So we believe that going from one agency to the next, that the survey is not necessary. Should in the future, there need to be, let's say they want a mortgage or they want to, they want to, when, when a survey is necessary, if they're going to subdivide, at that point in time, we can do the survey. But we believe for purposes of the executive order to transfer, that a survey may not be necessary. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I would assume, Mr. Suji, you're just here for support? Okay. Brian Yam, Brian Miyamoto with Hawaii Farm Bureau in support. Ta-da! I just called your name. House Bill 511, Hawaii Farm Bureau in support. And this 511 has to do with not needing the survey in order to set aside the land to transfer to another agency?
Support.
Take a deep breath.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee. Brian Miyamoto here on behalf of the Hawaii Farm Bureau. My apologies, Chair, we had an advise and consent hearing, so sorry for the tardiness.
You're a busy guy.
Sorry for the other bills that we missed. Oh, we're absolutely in support of this bill. Again, this is in regards to Act 90. We don't want the surveys to delay the transfers that have been approved by both DLNR and, or BLNR and DOA. So we, we, it, it doesn't eliminate the need for the survey, it just allows the process to continue. Again, as you know, Hawaii Farm Bureau is a stunt supporter of transferring those lands from DLNR agricultural production lands over to DOA. So again, we are in strong support, and we do apologize for our tardiness, Chair.
No problem. Thank you very much, Mr. Miyamoto. And next, we have testimony from the Hawaii Cattlemen's Council, Nicole Galase on Zoom. Please proceed.
Thank you, Chair Tarnas, Vice Chair Poipoi, Members of the Committee. I'm Nicole Galase on behalf of the Hawaii Cattlemen's Council. HCC is in support of this measure. As like everyone else said before, this is an important piece of successfully implementing Act 90. Unfortunately, the surveys are expensive, they take a long time, but in the cases where both the state and leaseholder agree on setting aside just a portion of the lease, we support being able to do that and complete the transfer between state departments without that. There are currently leases that need surveys, that are holding up those Act 90 transfers, as well as leases in the pipeline for transferring that will need surveys. So this is a measure that will be beneficial to both the leaseholders as well as the state. Mahalo.
Thank you, Ms. Galase. Anyone else wishing to testify in House Bill 511? House Draft 1? Someone on Zoom? Clayton Kubo. Mr. Kubo, please proceed.
Clayton Kubo, I'm from Hawaii. I understand the Act 90, but just to make note of this, when they take DOFA lands and give it into something else, you had better watch that one there, because guys coming after agriculture lands and they like make them into what you call garbage dumps, yeah? Mahalo. Aloha.
Okay. Thanks, Mr. Kubo. Appreciate it. Anyone else wishing to testify in House Bill 511? House Draft 1? If not, questions, Members? I have a quick question of Department of Land and Natural Resources. We're grateful that you're here, Chair Chang. You had mentioned there was one parcel in particular that's costing a whole lot of money to survey. Which, which one is that?
Kapapala.
And that's, that's one of the ranches that you've been working with for some time in order to complete your analysis and determine what portion of it is to be transferred?
Right.
And so you're in the middle of that process now, is that correct?
Yes, Chair, yes, we are. So I think, Russell, do we have a, do we have a completion date of that survey? Or maybe, I'm sorry, I, I think our DOFA people would know more, but they have been doing the survey. It's just that it's a very large parcel of land, so that's part of the reason. But we are in the middle of that survey. I think we're very close, if not, we're very close to completing the survey.
Well, perhaps afterward, you could just fill me in on the latest, because I know there's stakeholders that have come in, they were wanting me to hear another bill, which I chose not to, but they were, there's great frustration about not, about the, how, how long this is taking. And, and I keep saying, they're doing their process, they're doing their process, and this bill touches on one of the things that causes the process to take so long. So I appreciate that you made reference to that, and I appreciate your comments now, just so you can help us, help educate us about this particular issue.
And, and we will get back to you, the, the specific status of that particular survey. But we are trying both DLNR and DOA to work as expeditiously as possible, but I think this bill will help us facilitate that. Thank you very much.
That's great. And I'm sure that the family at the Kapapala Ranch appreciates you moving as quickly as you can.
I know they do.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks very much. Any other questions, Members? If not, let's move on to the next measure. House Bill 661, House Draft 1 relating to environmental review. This measure permits, except in certain circumstances, a previously authorized activity challenged as being subject to environmental review to continue while the applicable agency or applicant conducts an environmental assessment, prepares an environmental impact statement, or determines whether the activity is exempt. First up, we have the Office of Planning and Sustainable Development. Mr. Tom Eisen. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Chair, Members. Tom Eisen with Office of Planning and Sustainable Development's Environmental Review Program. It's still quite a mouthful. We stand in our submitted testimony, which, like some other testimonies, suggests ways that the temporary continuance provided for in the bill can be limited in its application so it doesn't end up having overly broad adverse impacts on the longstanding and generally appreciated environmental review process. Thank you, and are available for comment, for questions?
You're, you make a specific recommended amendment. Could you highlight what that is, please?
Yeah, the verbiage in there includes, this would apply to activities previously permitted, authorized, or undertaken by an applicant. And in theory, that could be just undertaken, so that could capture non-permitted activities would still be able to fall under this. I don't, that seems like an overly broad application, so if you strike the, or undertaken aspects and just leave it permitted or authorized, that provides some guardrails.
Thank you. Appreciate your explanation of your recommended amendment. Thanks very much. Next, we have the Department of Land and Natural Resources.
Again, good afternoon, Chair and Vice Chair of the Committee and Members. Don Chang on behalf of Department of Land and Natural Resources. We stand in support of this measure. We believe that this is a prudent course of action to take. It permits DLNR to be in compliance, to, to pursue compliance with Chapter 343, but at the same time permits status quo of permitted activities, those who have actual permits. It does not authorize a new, a new, a new permit for new, a new activity, but only those that have existing permits. We are also proposing an amendment to narrowly tailor this to just Chapters 187A, HRS, excuse me, HRS Chapters 187A, 188, 189, 190, or 200.
If you could explain to the public and to us what those chapters govern, what parts of your large department this covers?
Fair enough. Let me work backwards. Chapter 200 is our Division of Boating and Ocean Recreation, so it would be mostly all of the commercial use permits that we issue. If you have a valid permit under Chapter 200, DOBAR, and we're going through the 343 process, you would continue. HRS, 187A, 188, 189, and 190 all deal with our Division of Aquatic Resources and permits that are issued by our, by DAR.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you very much for that explanation. Next, we have Brandon Azama.
... in the face to the numerous Windward Oahu Boards, Commissions, and Organizations, including the Ko'ola Poko Hawaiian Civic Club, that have expressed, expressly voiced opposition to this practice in our community. Ending commercial aquarium collection in Ko'ola Poko and particularly Kaniohibe, a collection hotspot, has been a club priority for decades. In 2017, after the courts voided commercial aquarium permits pending HIPAA review, DLNR authorized the loophole that allowed collecting. authorized the loophole that allowed collectors to continue collecting with a commercial marine license, or CML. In one year, under the DILNR authorized CMLs from 2018 to 2019, aquarium catch in Kanihebe skyrocketed by over 420%, with 8,604 reef animals taken from Kanihebe in 2018 to 36,494 of our reef animals taken in 2019. That same year, collectors reported catch numbers of Yaloteng, one of the most sought-after species for collectors in Kanihebe, alone exceeding the island-wide annual catch average going back to 2000. This significant increase in reef wildlife extraction devastated our reef ecology and was a direct result of DILNR's decision to rubber stamp commercial aquarium collection activities without having taken a prior look at the action's environmental impacts, a practice that HB 661 would not only authorize, but encourage DILNR to continue despite the potentially wide-reaching and significant impacts it could have on our public trust lands, water resources in Ko'olapokohawai and beyond. On a personal note...
Could you please summarize?
Yes, I'll summarize. I'll summarize my personal note, anyway. I am opposed to providing a way for the state agencies' fulfillment of its fiduciary duties. Allowing potentially detrimental work to continue as seen in Kanihebe results in a take, 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 but at what cost for our future generations? Economic growth in Hawaii should not come at the expense of our environment and detriment to future generations. These policies, as I see it, are not bad for business, but to prevent bad business. To follow suit with a historical precedent on a particular activity negates the fact that our environment is changing. We are taught to kila and then to adjust our practices based on our own observations. And I ask the committee as an individual and as a liaison for the Ko'olapokohawaiian Civic Club to please vote no to HB 661. Mahalo.
Thank you, and best wishes to your family. I understand you've got to go, so best wishes. Aloha.
Aloha.
Okay, Ted Boland, Hawaii Reef and Ocean Coalition, Climate Protectors. Please proceed.
Thank you, Chair Tarnas, Vice Chair Poipoi, and members of the committee. Ted Boland for the Hawaii Reef and Ocean Coalition and the Climate Protectors Hawaii in strong opposition to this bill. I served for 15 years as the Deputy Attorney General representing the Environmental Council and the Office of Environmental Quality Control that does environmental reviews for the state. It's my opinion, based on that experience, that this bill would undercut the basic purpose of HIPAA, which is to ensure that projects with potential environmental impacts undergo proper review before they proceed, allowing for informed decision-making, public participation, and in many cases, improvement in the project. I won't go on at length, because you've got 400 pages of the testimony. You've got my written testimony. I'm happy to answer any questions, but we strongly oppose this bill. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next person who said they wish to testify is Antonette Davis, Activities and Attractions Association of Hawaii Incorporated, on Zoom. Please proceed.
Aloha. Thank you so very much for scheduling this. Antonette Davis, Activities and Attractions Association of Hawaii. We support this bill. We also support HEPA and the Umberger ruling. This bill in no way was meant to open the door for aquarium collection. This bill is meant specifically for Kaanapali, for commercial boats that are non-consumptive, that look and don't take, that run off the shore there. Some of them have been running for 30, 40 years. What is a collateral damage of this is that, due to a lawsuit from some activists, these businesses are going to be shut down while the EA is being done. And what we're looking for is a way to balance this and allow those operators to run while the EA is happening. Our organization and most all of our members of our nonprofit trade organization are stewards to this place. They take people on safe, guided, environmentally friendly, environmentally protective tours. And they should not be shut down, and this should not be used as a tool for a group of anti-terrorism people to shut them down, which is what's happening. So we're just looking for a way to have this balanced. So again, very controversial, but so I so appreciate you hearing this bill. I'm here for any questions you may have. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Next, Daniel Hazen, Holo-Holo Charters, on Zoom.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, and Committee members. Thank you for the opportunity to testify via Zoom for my strong support of House Bill 661. I believe this bill is vital for ensuring that previously permitted activities can continue operating while undergoing these environmental reviews. We're not saying that we don't want to do the reviews. We're willing to do them, but to shut us down within a year without giving us an opportunity to perform these reviews, I believe is unethical. These are current legally commercially permitted activities. Like Ms. Davis said, we are not takers. We are not the fisheries. We are tour operators that perform these tours with culture, environment, and history in mind. We serve our guests, Hawaiians' guests, with plenty of knowledge, not just good service, but knowledge about protecting the environment and being stewards of the environment. I'll keep it brief, that's all I have, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Next, Wayne Tanaka, Sierra Club of Hawaii. On Zoom? Nope. Not present. Okay. Next, Kay Nishiki on Zoom. Please proceed.
Aloha, Chair and Committee members. I'm Kay Nishiki, testifying from Maui, and I represent Napapai Va'iva Ula'ula, and we oppose HB 661. In 2017, we filed a suit against DILNR, asking it to consider the environmental impacts of increased commercial activity in Kaanapali because of concerns for public safety in the ocean, as well as public access and parking, discharge of wastewater, among other things. In 2024, the court ordered DILNR to halt issuing and renewing commercial permits off of Kaanapali until they complete an environmental assessment or determine the permits are exempt from review. After the court's decision, we immediately reached out to DILNR to propose an interim solution that implemented common sense permit conditions and actions that would allow activity to continue while assessments were ongoing. And these were common sense conditions that protect public health and safety. It was DILNR's inaction that unnecessarily escalated the situation and has pitted our community members and families against each other. Thankfully, we took matters into our own hands and contacted the boaters directly, and the boating community was very receptive, because these were very common sense conditions. And the parties are in discussion, and we are in discussion about a tentative agreement that would allow the boating activities to continue with protections in place. But instead of engaging with the parties, DILNR has really dragged their feet in even responding or trying to be a part of the solution, and instead just came to the state legislature for a blank check that would further enable their ongoing mismanagement while systematically dismantling environmental protections with no recourse. We ask that this commission oppose HB 661, and I am available for any questions that you might have about the proposed settlement. And just to understand, I would like you folks to understand, we are all about solutions and finding workable solutions that benefit everyone. And this bill, and the urgency behind it, is completely manufactured, and it's drastic, divisive, and completely unnecessary. And we urge this commission to really tell DILNR, hey, you know, these are real concerns. Get in a room, work it out.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Ms. Nishiki. Next, Mike Nakachi on Zoom. Not present. Next, Victoria Takamine in person. Everyone knows you as Kumuhula Vicki Holt Takamine.
Aloha, Mike Akko.
She's a very famous person.
Thank you so much for having me. I'm here to represent a broad section of Kumuhula that are concerned about this bill. We strongly oppose this bill. We feel, you know, we worked really hard on the protection to draft the agreement for Papahanaumokuakea. We were invited to the White House for the designation by President Bush, and this would really undermine and take away all of those protections that we put in place. We cannot open for extractive and commercial activities. This is unacceptable, and as native Hawaiians, we are strongly opposed to all of that. So thank you very much. Any questions?
Thank you very much.
Okay, mahalo.
Next, Ron Tubbs on Zoom. Not present. Next, Stephanie Freed on Zoom. Not present. Next, Kavai Warren on Zoom. Please proceed.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, House Committee members. My name is Kavai Warren. I'm testifying on behalf of Na'aki'a Kai. We're a community-based organization of fishermen and cultural practitioners from West Kauai. We strongly oppose this HEPA-based House Bill 661. We stand on our written testimony. We'd like to emphasize a point or two. In West Kauai, we are no strangers to corporate greed and pay-to-play politics. For decades, our community has borne the brunt of multiple environmental injustices, from the wholesale plantation diversions of water that dried up our streams, to GMO corn companies that sprayed pesticides near our homes and our schools, to the island-only landfill and only military base built right along the shorelines, numerous other industrial uses that have polluted our land, our ocean waters, through decades of advocacy to protect our communities. West Kauai has become Mak'ala to the legal tools like HEPA that are put in place to protect our communities, our families, from further degradation. HEPA requires government decision-makers to ensure that environmental impacts, mitigation, measures, and alternatives are fully thoughtfully considered before allowing further degradation of our public trust lands, waters, and resources. It mandates public participation can voice our concerns and have address. Our community has actively engaged in environmental review process that impacts our communities, and we have utilized HEPA to demand accountability from decision-makers. But this bill cuts us off at the knees. It threatens our continued ability to protect our community by giving state agencies a free path to rubber stamp environmentally destructive activities without firstly looking at impacts and without giving a voice to the community. You know, I'd like to also mention that with the harbors, the state, DILNR, they gave over 40 permits for our Kikiolo Boat Harbor on the west side. This is a recreational boat harbor and not a commercial boat harbor. Not to mention with the increase on activities near the Napali coast, where we used to gather and collect fish, now it's being inundated by tourists, by sunscreen that will kill the limo that kills the fish, the very food that we eat. So by taking away HEPA, you're allowing these peoples to have permits that were illegally given by...
May I ask you to summarize, please, sir?
Yeah, yeah, so summarize, sir. Thank you very much. On behalf of Na'aki'a Kai, I urge you to uphold integrity and the necessary valuable legal tool. Vote a'ole, no on HB 661. Thank you very much. I'm here for any questions on the side of the island that I live on. Please ask me some questions.
Mahalo. Next, Inga Gibson on Zoom.
Aloha, Mike Akko, Chair Tarnas, Vice Chair Poipoi, and Committee members. Thank you so much. Strong opposition, and I did want to just remind the Committee that the Senate Judiciary Committee yesterday asked Senate Bill 1074, which is the companion, with some amendments. So another reason we would really ask that you defer this bill, especially in light of the broadening, extremely dangerous, expanding amendments that the Division of Aquatic Resources. The amendments that they have proposed expands this to fisheries, to anything related to aquatic resources, far, far beyond the intent of this measure to address a specific case related to a specific court decision. Basically, this would turn HIPAA on its head, and as you know so well, Chair Tarnas, HIPAA is so critical to the protection of our environment. You have in the past yourself, you know, expressed the importance of allowing the HIPAA process to continue in making or not making certain decisions when it comes to resources held in the public trust. So we really urge the Committee to hold this measure. If there is interest in continued resolution, SB 1074 is still alive. But right now, with accepting the amendments of DILNR or any other interests, commercial interests, you would basically be returning this bill to the same form of HB 123 and SB 22 that previously killed rightfully in other committees. So thank you for the opportunity, and let's continue to protect our environment and work on this issue in another form. Mahalo.
Thank you, Ms. Gibson. Next, Denver Kuhn.
Afternoon, Chair Tarnas, Vice Chair Poipoi, and members of the Committee. My name is Denver Kuhn. I'm here on behalf of the Ocean Tourism Coalition, also here on behalf of Chil'jia Excursions. That's our family business that's operated on Maui for over 50 years. You have my written testimony. We wanted to kind of refocus the bill and narrow it down to avoid any unintended consequences. And the only thing, you know, to address some of the, I guess there's talks of a settlement and things like that, you know, we're not a party to the suit. Ultimately, that would be the state and the plaintiffs that would decide that, I suppose, also the judge. So right now, all I can do is speculate on that. But what, you know, what we're looking for is, I've gotten already multiple emails and texts from employees today saying like, do you have an answer for me? I'm just trying to get them some type of more concrete assurance that they're going to have those jobs. You know, some of them are trying to rebuild their homes, and they can't go to the bank on speculation. So I just want to provide them with a more concrete answer that they're going to have, you know, their jobs at the end of the year. So thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kuhn. Next, Mahesh Cleveland, Earth Justice.
Yes, thank you, Chair Tarnas, Vice Chair Poipoi, and Committee members. My name is Mahesh Cleveland. I'm with Earth Justice Mid-Pacific Office. You've heard great testimony from community members across the pie I know already. You've even heard the Kaanapali folks speak to the sort of situation that they've been put in. I think, I just want to call it out, I think we all know what's going on here, and it was totally avoidable. Years ago, when Ms. Nishiki mentioned that they had filed their initial lawsuit against the Kaanapali boaters, I mean, it's been seven years that DILNR could have and should have at least considered the HIPAA exemption route. This was totally avoidable. Like Ms. Nishiki said, the plaintiffs in that case, they put a settlement on the table. DILNR and their attorneys are the holdup here. They are the problem here. This is an issue that goes back to before the current administration, so all respect to Auntie Dawn, but like, turning this bill back into 123, which, as Inga mentioned, was killed two weeks ago, is not narrowing the scope of this bill. It's broadening it by far and basically absolving our very agency that manages public natural resources, absolves them from having to grapple with environmental effects of the permits they give out. So this bill, as written, goes way beyond its intended purpose, which was to help the Kaanapali guys stay in business while their lawsuit plays out. DILNR needed to do an exemption, at least a consideration of an exemption determination years ago. They need to come to the table with this settlement. If they can get that settlement moving forward, there's no need for these bills. And again, I'll just reiterate what Inga said, is that there's a Senate bill already that solves this problem with a bunch of amendments, and so it may be the simpler route to just let one bill go through instead of have these dueling bills. So we highly encourage you folks to hold this bill and appreciate the time to testify. Mahalo.
Thank you very much. Next, Max Phillips, Center for Biological Diversity on Zoom.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, Committee members. I'm Max Phillips. I am the Hawaii Director and Staff Attorney for the Center for Biological Diversity. We're in strong opposition of House Bill 661, which would enable agencies to continue approving environmentally destructive activities and activities without adequately assessing their impacts until, as Mahesh just said, if ever the agencies decide to conduct a proper review or take corrective actions. This turns as, you know, already, my kapuna have said it better, my community members have said it better, my colleagues have said it better, but this will turn HIPAA on its head. And really, the only thing to do is to shut it down, to defer it, and not, we're not in a situation now where we can let there be less environmental protections. We need to stand onipaa for it. So I just, I strongly encourage this Committee to oppose or just defer. Mahalo.
Thanks very much. Next, Charlie Young on Zoom. Next, Charlie Young on Zoom. Charlie, you there? You want to unmute yourself and turn on your video? There you are. Go ahead, sir.
You may regret that. Chair Tarnas and Vice Chair, Poi Poi. My name is Charles Young. I live in South Kona on the island of Hawaii. And I'm representing the Hawaii island of Ha'umoko. There's a subject matter that we're not talking about, I think, today that's relevant to this bill, and that's the Kapahakai analysis, which is the analysis that the Supreme Court in year 2000 required that when state agencies make major decisions, that they need to take into account the native Hawaiian gathering rights. The Kapahakai analysis also sets out a framework for that. And I can say honestly, although it was passed or approved in year 2000, there has been very little done in order to put it, institutionalize it within the decision-making policy. We've been working really hard to do that. And I think the Chair Chang would agree as well. But we need to understand that while we're talking about HEPA, environmental issues, Hawaiian gathering rights are totally dependent on the health and thriving resources that we have. So we're sweeping away the Hawaii gathering rights. These are constitutionally protected. And I think we need to look at those issues as well before we look at what the superficial results are. There's some really deep, underlying things that type bills of this type, and I'm not only opposed to this one, I would be opposed to all that don't take into consideration the, you know, the Kapahakai analysis as well as HEPA. And frankly, I think it's the, it's not any one particular person's fault. It is really the cumulative effects of years of, on ocean usage that in some ways is underregulated. I thank you very much for allowing me to submit this testimony. Mahalo noi la.
Mahalo, Charlie. Always good to see you, sir. Next, we have Blake Moore.
Chair, Vice Chair, and committee members, thank you for allowing us to testify today. I am unaware of a lot of the folks who seem to have a lot bigger degrees than me on the environmental stuff. I know that there are dozens of families that are watching on Zoom right now, wondering about their jobs. And I would disagree with some of the folks that are on Zoom saying this is not an urgent matter. It's a very urgent matter. People don't know if they'll have their jobs in May. It's the end of February. So, and myself being a homeowner in South Maui and managing about 50 families in Kanapali, it's an incredibly urgent matter. Literally, people don't know if they're going to be, you know, working at the end of May. So, you know, I'm here to speak primarily on behalf of those families. I fully support, you know, any amendments that narrow the scope. I remember picketing against, you know, fish collectors. So I feel like I'm a little bit on both sides here. I don't want water taken away from your communities. I was here last week or two weeks ago. We don't want those things either. But what we can't have is our West Maui families, again, out of work and nowhere to go this time. There's not jobs available for us to move to. Those jobs are also taken. So we would ask you guys to consider the impacts of deferring this bill or even voting down this bill. There are hundreds of families, vendors, many people that are depending on this moving forward. I know nothing about a settlement. We are not involved in that at all. We are very confused and very afraid that our jobs are going to be gone. And we certainly can't wait a year or even months waiting on some other process that we're unfamiliar with to play out. So thank you for allowing us to testify today on behalf of those folks watching online. We ask you guys to support this bill moving forward so we can work through the amendments as discussed. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Moore. Next, Bianca Isaki on Zoom, not present. Next. Greg Masekian on Zoom. Please proceed.
Thank you, Chair. Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the committee. My name is Greg Masekian, and I currently serve as the first Vice President of the Kukua Council, an elder advocacy organization in Hawaii since 1972. I also serve on the Waikiki Neighborhood Board. But today, I'm testifying as an individual in opposition to HB 661, HD1. I hope the committee has had an opportunity to carefully read all of the opposition testimony, but it appears that quite a few have shown up today to show their opposition. So I'm very pleased to see that. I understand that those that support this bill have skin in the game, as many want their projects or future projects to move forward unless restrictions and oversight are better for them. But please remember that you are lawmakers on this committee, and you are supposed to uphold the laws of the state of Hawaii and not introduce bills to circumvent them. HB 661 is an affront, in my opinion, to Chapter 343, the Hawaii Environmental Policy Act, and Article 11, Section 9 of the Hawaii Constitution, which outline requirements, regulations, and laws meant to protect the environment and the people of Hawaii. And I would just also like to mention, there's another project. But in my opinion, and many people's opinions, there's other projects floating around that require full impact, environmental impact statements. Full AIS. One of those is the Alawai Pedestrian Bridge Project, which is a $63 million project. And I truly hope that our legislators are watching that project because there's quite a bit of opposition to not having a full environmental impact statement. That is over a waterway, and that is over a special district and a very well-known landmark in Hawaii, which is the Alawai Canal. So I truly hope that our lawmakers, when you look at these things, you look at the requirements for environmental studies, environmental regulations, and environmental laws. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, Captain Marker. Captain Jeffrey Marker on Zoom? Nope. Okay, not present. Next, Dave Rainey on Zoom, not present. Next, Gloria Jernigan on Zoom, not present. Next, Clayton Kubo. Oh, we just, we had, we heard Clayton already. On this bill, did we hear you on this bill, Clayton? Go ahead, Clayton Kubo. You're next.
Clayton Kubo, I'm a Kawai'i. I'm pretty sure that this bill is saying that, not just Canada, yes. This bill is basically saying that if they're going to a lawsuit, that they gotta, you know, they can still participate, yet doing what they're doing. So in a way, I'm wondering, right now, for myself, can this bill come down on recreational fishing? Can this bill come down on hunting? So in a way, you know, sorry about that noise, but I see right over here on the side of the road because the signal ain't that great. So in a way, hopefully, you guys can realize that this bill is not just about aquarium, which they have, they have to shut down. This bill is not just about commercial passenger. This bill is not just about CMLs. This bill can protect at least the guys that is on the bottom of the chain. Mahalo noi aloha.
Mahalo, Clayton. Next, Isaac Harp on Zoom. Please proceed, Mr. Harp.
What's your turn, is Vice Chair, Poi Poi, and members of the JHA Committee? My name is Isaac Paha Harp. I strongly oppose HB 661, House Draft 1, intending to weaken the Hawaii Environmental Policy Act. Please hold HB 661. If your committee decides not to hold this bill, please ensure that it is specific to the tour boat industry only. State waters of Papahano Mokuakea were designated as a marine refuge two decades ago, where no commercial activity is allowed. We're now facing the potential full-scale commercialization of Papahano Mokuakea under the Department of Commerce if their proposed sanctuary is approved by Congress in the coming weeks. National Marine sanctuaries are not protected areas, but areas managed to allow multiple uses and to maximize commerce, as is evidenced by the Humpback Whirl Sanctuary. If a sanctuary is designated state watered in Papahano Mokuakea could maintain existing protections, but only if the governor refuses to relinquish control over state waters to the Office of National Marine Sanctuaries. Relinquishing control over state waters in the past resulted in a devastation of lobster populations by Westpac lobster fisheries and depletion of bottomfish by Westpac bottomfish fishers. Lobster populations have never recovered in 25 years. No resource extraction should be allowed in state waters of Papahano Mokuakea other than for research deemed necessary by state agencies, sustenance purposes, and to support cult practices by native Hawaiians. No impact to businesses would occur if no commercial activities are allowed. Mahalo.
Thanks very much, Isaac. Good to hear you again. Next, Mike Kelly on Zoom. Please proceed.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, committee members. Thank you for your time today. I've been a West Maui resident for 47 years. So nearly 50 years I've worked on the beach in Kanapali, in the water in Kanapali, at the resorts in Kanapali, ocean recreation of all sorts for nearly 50 years. We are unfortunately caught in the crossfires of this, in the boating and ocean recreation business. It is tragic that the collateral damage may take away everything that we offer in the ocean for our visitors. There'll be no surf lessons. There'll be no scuba diving. There'll be no parasailing. There'll be no catamarans. There'll be no outrigger canoes, nothing. So the crossfires is where we find ourselves, which is a very difficult place to be in. And I think the bill needs to pass. I encourage you to pass it. I encourage you not to defer it. The narrowing that happened yesterday with the Senate bill, I think, was helpful. And the continued narrowing would also be helpful. The aquarium fish collecting in the east Maui waters are certainly convoluted issues and issues that need attention. But they're different issues than what we're talking about, and we're caught in that crossfire in West Maui. So I would ask you, for the families that are involved, for the businesses that are involved, I did some quick math, and it's 260 families that would be on the street. But it's more than that. It's probably a thousand jobs lost. And this includes 225,000 meals that would be served in boats next year. It would no longer be served. Ice, beverages, the parking, the transportation, the concierge, the room nights in the hotels. When you look at all the collateral damage that happens by this removal of all ocean recreation and boating in Kanapali, it's catastrophic. So I encourage you and plead with you, please, to pass 661, and let's move forward with a solution. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kelly. Next, Sands Dyer on Zoom. Please proceed.
Hello, Chair, Vice Chair, and committee members. Thank you for taking my testimony today. I just want to start that I'm in strong support of Bill 661. I'm a permittee owner on Kanapali Beach. This would negatively impact not only my business, but every single other business that Mike Kelly just talked about and the hundreds and hundreds of employees, their jobs, when we have already been affected so hard by the Lahaina fires. The testimony I want to really drive home is we're not involved in the lawsuit that was mentioned by previous people. We do not have any sort of settlement agreement whatsoever. We're not involved in that lawsuit. So that's egregious. The last thing I want to say is I hope you consider that all of these employees, more than half of mine own, lost their own homes and everything that they own. And this would be another blow to a community that is really, really struggling and is in disarray. And we're trying to recover and shutting down another huge industry and then giving the precedent to now shut that down across the state is not what we need. We need to build together, grow together, and get everything back on the feet. We're not affecting the environment in a negative way. We're actually, we educate our tour guests, and we're very much stewards of the sea. And we are the ones that want to make our environment better. So it's, and if they want to do an environmental assessment, please pass this bill so that we can continue on operating while they do it. Thank you so much for hearing my testimony.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dyer. Next, Kim Koch on Zoom.
Thank you, Chair Tarnas, Vice Chair, committee members. You know, as someone that has completed the EIS through this court ruling, for everyone watching, the aquarium fishery did complete an EIS. It went through the court's process. And I think that's the reason you're hearing so many people scared of this process is because the aquarium fishery is still shut down even after completing it. So they're looking at it like it's a Chinese finger trap. Once you get in, you never get out. So with that, unfortunately, hearing tourism groups complaining about fisheries, requesting and stating they don't have impacts, has kind of changed my opinion. No impact is laughable, as one of their boats sits on the rocks in a conservation district as we speak. All of these 343 bills originate from the tourism industry attacking fisheries. The Maui dive and tourism groups went to court, claimed they don't see fish, demanding immediate shutdowns. Remember, Umberger is from the dive and tour industry in Maui. The conflict is easy to understand. They want fish for their commercial activities. No sympathy for fishers. They claim they support Umberger ruling while asking for grace because they are not takers. They did not care about sad stories from the aquarium fishery. They demand full shutdowns. I would say this is the boomerang effect. Supporting data shows dumping hundreds of thousands of tourists a year at the same sites is impactful. They might not take, but they sure as heck displace. Read the Hanama Bay COVID-era data. Fish came back in numbers never recorded when the tourists were gone. It is hard, is it hard to understand that constant human presence alters marine life behavior? Maybe this is the reason they are seeing less fish. They asked for an EIS, and the West Hawaii fishery did that. They argued it to the Supreme Court, and the West Hawaii EIS was upheld by the same Supreme Court that started all this mess in Umberger. So let's play this bill out. What happens at the end of the review process? Nothing if you look to the aquarium fishery. Please add language that clears up this mess by stating once the process is complete and court approved, it could continue or will continue. Don't cause more confusion. Don't give carve-outs. Don't prejudicially apply. If the intent is to clean up the mess, support DLNR's testimony and add that the project shall be permitted at the end of the completion of 343, if upheld by the courts. And all this funny language, you know, was currently permitted and whatever amendments that the Senate Judiciary had. I think we need to be transparent because the reason this--
Could you summarize, please, Ms. Koch?
Yes, I support with amendments. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your testimony. Next, Uilani Nai Po on Zoom.
Aloha, Chair Tarnas, Vice Chair, Poi Poi, members of the Committee on Judiciary and Hawaiian Affairs. I know I make aloha yaka kua pau. O vau o Uilani Nai Po no mokuakea. I stand on my written testimony, strong opposition to this bill, HB 661. When considering the subject matter of this bill, there are so many stakeholders, and for some of us, right holders. But the one that stands uniquely apart from all of us Kanaka is HEPA. Hawaii's Environmental Policy Act is our pillar voice of governance, whose function is to serve with authority over the protection of our resources. We are in unprecedented times where research, conservation, stewardship programs are being cut. We cannot be liberal in renewing commercial activity permits that have already been identified as requiring EISs. We cannot delay the work that HEPA asks us to comply with. Only now, we're finally conducting capacity planning exercises and research for cumulative activities in Marine Life Conservation District, and another one being proposed in this year's legislation. These are after the fact and while permits continue to be issued. These are long-time running activities that once may have been okay, but now cumulatively is putting too much pressure on our natural resources. Extractive commercial activities that have depleted the health of our reefs and while providing no benefit for food security of Hawaii, those need to be ceased. HEPA prioritizes our natural and cultural resources at the very top, as it should. Hawaii needs your support for HEPA, not allow it to be circumvented. Please hold HB 661. Mahalo.
Mahalo. Next, Ka'imi Kaupiko on Zoom.
Aloha, Chair Tarnas. I do have written testimony in opposition of HB 661. Again, like Nani and many of the others have shared, I'm deeply concerned that how this bill will affect Hawaii's reefs and the coral practices. HEPA is an important part to protect many of our coastal practices from being exploited through these processes. I think HEPA do its job to inform agency decision-making beforehand rather than handing industries a free pass to continue causing harm for years on end until they get around to completing the environmental review process. This bill will turn HEPA review into an afterthought and meaningless formality to justify harm that's already being done and can't be undone. This bill would get at HEPA's whole purpose and is unnecessary. HEPA provides for exemptions of activities that have truly minor impacts. So I strongly urge you to vote No on HB 661. Mahalo.
Thank you, Mr. Kaupiko. Next, our last testifier, Kalen Bray on Zoom, not present. Is there anyone else here wishing to testify in House Bill 661, HD1? Ah, Wayne Tanaka, you're here. I called you earlier, and you weren't here. So please, go ahead. Nope, go ahead. You were trying to be in two places at once. You're trying to be in two places at once. Please proceed.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee. Wayne Tanaka of the Circle of Oha'i. And we oppose this measure. You have a written testimony. I think, just like to add a few points and notes or questions. My understanding is that the situation with the Kaanapali Boulders is being resolved through settlement discussions. You know, I think the representative for the plaintiffs in the Senate side submitted testimony to that effect. And so they're fine-tuning the language so we could potentially, you know, avoid having to start taking apart our environmental review law and still provide relief for some of the impacted businesses. I do have, I do want to raise the issue or the question as to whether and to what extent DLNR has tried to move forward with complying with HIPAA? Like, has environmental assessment been started? Have they thought about looking at a, petitioning the Environmental Council for a categorical exemption that could address this issue and then work on permit conditions that will ensure that there are no significant impacts? I feel like there are multiple pathways that could have been and could still be followed that would provide relief and resolution without, you know, all of this controversy around this particular proposal. So with that, respectfully ask you to hold this measure and I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tanaka. Is there anyone else wishing to testify in House Bill 661, House Draft 1? Go ahead, Angela.
Angela Melody Young, cares, neutral. I don't oppose nor support this bill. Without prior knowledge of the recent court decisions, I can't be for or against it. But as I read it, it seems like the bill is trying to protect environmental standards and expand statutory provisions for exemptions, right? So it creates a set of standards for exemptions for certain activities. And if it were to pass in this chapter, it does list as much as possible the references to Chapter 6E. So everyone in the state of Hawaii can read it and be like, oh, yes, the Shipti Evi Kapuna rules. And so the development and the permitted and unpermitted activities within this chapter in consideration of environmentally sensitive places. You know, here in Hawaii, we want to transform the way we think about how we use and develop the land and to be respectful of natural resources. So it should be a balance of development, building to support small businesses such as surf schools at the beach, as well as working with the Hawaiian culture and the unique characteristics of the state of Hawaii. So in this chapter, yeah, it's very detailed. It goes over waste-to-energy facilities, landfills. It also talks about helicopter facilities and historic sites with sensitivity to environmental damage. And it goes above and beyond to what the other testifiers mentioned for harvesting seaweed and aquarium fish and permitted boating activities. So to be considerate of marginalized communities with limited natural and environmental resources, as well as to be considerate of Hawaiian communities and the effect upon overdevelopment in the land. Ideally, no permitting that is harmful to the environment should be allowed to be exempt. Yet, the public pressure to develop the land then pressures the law to start to create the exemptions. And sometimes yet, we can also be overly cautious and not--
Could you summarize, please, Ms. Young?
So, you know, the permitting process, yes. It's an individual application. And so I think from this perspective, are the people reviewing the applications understanding the specificities of the law?
Thank you.
And where in the spike in the numbers of the permitted activities, like what--
Thank you.
There's a process for that internally. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else wishing to testify in House Bill 661, House Draft 1? If not, questions, members? Representative Ladi.
DLNR, please. I know it's difficult to comment on current litigation, but since that's been a topic of this kind of hearing, and I don't know, I was not watching. When do we have time to watch what the other body is doing? I don't know what happened in the Senate committee. Can you give a timeline as to when some of the-- there might be resolution?
Dawn Chang, Chair of the Board of Land and Natural Resources. We're not part of those settlement discussions. The lawsuit, the commercial use permutes were not part of the lawsuit. The lawsuit was only against DLNR. We did, as a result of this case, we did urge, we supplied, we provided a supplemental brief to Judge Cahill in this matter saying what the impacts are. So we're not part of the settlement negotiations. I'm sorry, that is going beyond us. I don't know who's part of that discussions as well.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Sure, thank you. Out of the questions. Representative Shimizu.
Thank you, Chair. You know, I've been hearing a lot of testimony both ways and this scope and history is very deep. And I'm trying to decide what is-- I don't want to say more important because I think there's a balance in all of this. And I don't want to override any previous HIPAA protections and yet I want to protect business concerns and the realities of the economy. So I have a question for you, DLNR. You've heard strong comments and concerns that DLNR, I mean, what I've heard anyway. I guess you heard them too, yeah.
I did.
Could have done more, to put it kindly. How does the public and we as legislators, how can we hold DLNR accountable beyond verbal promises? And how can we make things porno? Because--
That's cool. Let her answer.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you for the question. I'm going to try to answer it as best as I can. One, many of these activities, including, as you've heard some testimony, have been going on for probably 30 years. They were not at that time required to comply with Chapter 343. However, DLNR over the years has seen a trend by the Hawaii Supreme Courts. It's not only the Umberger case and the Aquarium Fish. And I want to make very clear, we are not in any way exempting Aquarium Fish through this exemption. They will be like everybody else. And they have, as one of the testifiers, completed a 343. But we have seen the trend, so with respect to EMI revocable permits. The court has told us, told DLNR, you can no longer just issue revocable permits every year without complying with Chapter 343. So we are doing the, so 343 was done for that. Umberger likewise, which is the Aquarium Fish. In that case, the Supreme Court also said you must do a 343 compliance before commercial Aquarium Fish are issued. So in that case, the Aquarium Fish industry prepared 343 EIS. So we have been seeing the trend of court cases that show that it's not isolated to just-- and then, and then there was this Na'pa'ai Vai Vai, which is the commercial use permits in Kaanapali. That per, that case was filed in 2017. It only applied to six permutes. It was for thrill craft and parasailing. As you heard today, this is much broader. So over the last eight years, there's a lot more activity going on there. So we're in no way saying we're not going to comply with Chapter 343. We too are trying to seek a balance. For those, for those activities that have already been permitted, they have a one-year permit. So those who have been permitted, we are asking that while we, while we go through the 343 process, so yes, we have looked at, some of these activities actually fall under an exemption. Some may require a chapter, an environmental assessment. But the Supreme, the court's case in the case, in this Pa'ai case, referenced the Umberger, a four-part test. So we cannot just say we're exempt. We have to go through the analysis, which in, to a certain extent, does include the Kapa'akai analysis. We are working with our Division of Aquatic Resources to help, ask them to help us assess what impacts do these activities have on the resources? So we have not been sitting idly. But this case came up and I also want to, I want to be very clear. This is not DLNR's bill. We did not introduce this bill. We were proposing to seek a process to comply with Chapter 343. So we believe the balance at this point in time is for those permutes who were actually permitted, that we would ask that you continue, to give them the opportunity to continue while we at DLNR, we're not asking the permit, the industry to get a 343. We're going to comply with Chapter 343, the Department of Land and Natural Resources. We will, we will do the 343 analysis. But pending our completion of that, as we represented to Judge Cahill in the Pa'ai case, we thought that was probably going to take us maybe about six months to do that, depending if it's an EIS, an EA, or an exemption. So we are in no way asking this body to exempt us from 343, but to permit authorized activities to continue while we comply with Chapter 343.
Thank you for that really good explanation. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. Vice Chair Poi Poi.
Hi, Chair Chang.
Yes.
I guess I'm just really frustrated because that, just that we had to get to this point with this, right? I mean, you spoke about that you've seen this trend happening over a long period of time and this seems like something that could have been gotten ahead of instead of getting to this point where we're trying to like play catch-up. And in your testimony, well, first, I guess, how long do you anticipate that review process to take? Because it doesn't say that anywhere.
Well, what we represented to Judge Cahill in the Pa'ai case was we thought it would take us six to eight months. Because we do, it's not just, we filed with OAC, we're doing an exemption. The Umberger case does require us to at least address the four tests in the Umberger case, even for an exemption. So we think about six to eight months if we're going to exercise the exemption. We believe that there are several exemptions within our, I think it's 11200, that does provide an exemption for renewal of an, of a permit or an ongoing activity. But clearly, this activity has increased. So we do believe we have to do some additional assessment. But we think six to eight months.
Okay. I guess I have a few questions about just the permitting process. When you, when DLNR issues permits, does it, do, do you clearly articulate to the applicants the nature of these permits, that they're time-limited, that they're not guaranteed renewal depending on changing conditions? Because I feel like that information upfront, there is, you know, a piece of informed consent that should happen so that all parties are aware of, you know, if someone's going to bank their entire livelihood on getting a permit that is not guaranteed to be renewed over and over again? Like, is that being communicated?
It is. It is, it is only a one-year permit. But under our existing rules that we are proposing to amend, it does provide that so long as you're in compliance and you reapply, we generally, we give you, we renew your permit. So I recognize the frustrations. I too am frustrated by that. Now, I want to just provide some context to this. In 1994, small boat harbors and our commercial permits were all under DOT, a very different mission. Commercial harbors increase, increase revenue. Coming over to DLNR, none of the resources came. Our mission is different. It is to protect and preserve the resources. And I recognize that we have not taken as, moved as quickly as some would like, but we are applying Kapa'akai analysis to many, to our permitting process, not all of our divisions. So yes, we were aware, we could see this in the Umberger case. We knew that this case was pending until the court came up with its final decision. Because previously, the, I think it was the Intermediate Court of Appeals did not, did not require a 343. It was only when it remanded it back to Judge Cahill that he required a 343. I'm hoping my recollection is correct.
Thank you. So in your testimony, you talked about finding balance and we heard some other testimony mentioning that. How, how do you find balance in measuring, you know, the different things? Because I think balance is like chasing the horizon, right? It's very elusive and I don't think ever finding that, like homeostasis is not something that can be done. So how do you really measure finding the balance between, you know, protecting the resource, the general public, and then the, the commercial part of it?
Excellent question. I wish I had an easy answer. I don't. We are really struggling with that because we recognize that many of these are being treated almost as entitlement, that we're going to get this. So we are doing better, we are doing a better job. We can terminate a permit if you're not complying. So our DOBAR is going back and they're doing, they're doing audits of all the permits. And if they're not in compliance, they are given a notice that your permit is not going to be renewed. So we're trying to do things institutionally to correct that. But with respect to environmental balances, we are trying to work more closely with Division of Aquatic Resources to try to, when we're identifying a particular place for an activity, what are the potential impacts to resources? Are there coral reefs where they're proposing to do their activities? Are they affecting people's access?
Okay, I think my question was more about like, how do you prioritize, like, the buckets of, you know, because you have your mission?
Yes.
And then you have these other things you're trying to balance in. And how do you prioritize all of those things?
Not well. I mean--
Well, thank you for the honesty.
Like I said, I mean, part of the struggle is this, this responsibility came to us that was not necessarily in alignment with DLNR's mission. I mean, we should be looking at public trust duties. That should be the focus of DLNR, given what our mandate is. But we also recognize we have these longstanding activities that have occurred. So we're trying to catch up. I assure you, we really are trying our best.
I get it. Can I have one more question?
Sure.
Okay. One or two more questions.
Okay.
So it was just mentioned, like, six to eight months. How far along in that six to eight months are you? Have you started the process?
So we have, we've identified all of the permutee, all the permits. But we have, I'll be, I'll just be real candid. We have not embarked on, on a separate Umberger assessment for all the activities. I mean, part of it is the, the potential scope of this. We issue, is it 2,000 permits? 800 permits. And that's just DOBAR. We've not even begun to look at DAR, all of their fishing permits. And even Clayton Kubo talked about potential hunting permits. I mean, I think if you, if you look at the court's definition of action, almost everything we do is an action that would fall under 343. So we are trying to prioritize where are the areas that have the highest potential rate of impacts? Are they near an activity area where there's a lot of recreational activities? Is it near where there's coral reefs? But I will be candid, we have not embarked on the separate analysis for all of these activities at this time. We're focusing on Kaanapali because that's right now before us. But we've not looked at all of our permits statewide.
Okay, thank you. And I think my last question is, you know, the state does have a duty to, a legal obligation[1714.21] to protect, protect public trust resources under the DLNR. Does the state have a legal obligation to allow permits, these commercial permits?
Well, under Chapter 200, which falls under DLNR, we are, we are authorized to issue permits for activities. And so in this case, many of those existing permits were authorized by statute, so.
Yeah, I agree that they're legal, like, you're authorizing permits, they're legal permits. I'm still just trying to find the balance and how the prioritization is working. I, which you answered very honestly, it's not working very well. And, you know, yeah, I just hope that going forward, the permit process can be cleaned up so we don't have to be here doing this.
No, I, I appreciate that, and I acknowledge that. We are trying our best, given capacity and resources and just the sheer scope of what our kuliana is. So yes, besides triaging, it is, we're trying to get a better handle.
And it's not all on you. It's decades of issues before. Thank you.
But the bug stops with me right now, so I understand.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate that. I have a couple of questions. It looks like we've got all the questions. Let me ask a couple of questions of you, Chair. Because of concerns that have brought up in testimony, I want to clear the air about some of these things. Right now, in the language of the bill, it is not narrow. This would apply to all different parts of the HRS. Your recommendation narrows it just pursuant to chapters of 187A, 188, 189, 190, or 200. So the way I read this, your amendment narrows the scope of this measure. Is that accurate?
That is correct. That's our intention with the amendment.
Okay, because right now, without that amendment, the scope of the current bill is very, very broad. It applies to all the different statutes. Okay, so you're suggesting to narrow it. With your amendments, how would this impact your consideration of the aquarium fish industry?
They don't, so it's, so all we're saying is, for those people who have a permit under one of these statutes, they would continue to be able to operate pending our compliance with 343. There is no aquarium permit at this time.
So there, this bill, with your amendment, actually would not affect your current consideration of the aquarium fish industry because there are no permits at the moment.
That's correct. So they're not, they're not part of this class.
So let me clear the air about that. Okay. Now there's a concern, I mean, our anti-Vicki Hold Takamine over here is very concerned about Papa'ana'au Mokuakia. How, with this bill, with your amendments, how will this affect that?
It doesn't affect it. We don't, we occasionally issue special use permits, but they also go through an analysis. So it would not affect any activity currently going on at Papa'ana'au Mokuakia. They have their own permitting process that they go through, which is rather rigorous. But there's no fishing permits, there's no AQ permits in Papa'ana'au Mokuakia. They have their own separate regulatory process.
Okay. Some have characterized this bill as gutting the Hawaii Environmental Protection Act. How would you react to that?
That is far from that. If anything, we are trying to comply. We, so we're not asking to be exempted from 343. We're just asking for somewhat of a recognition that there are people who had an authorized permit. And, but we're saying we will comply with 343, whether it's seeking an exemption, whether it's doing an EA, whether it's doing an EIS. We have talked about doing programmatic, a programmatic EA or EIS, where we treat a program and look at the impacts to the program. So we're looking at different ways to address this, but we are in no way suggesting that we're going to exempt ourselves. I mean, the last thing I want is another lawsuit. I think the courts have been very clear to us. So we are, we are taking that into consideration. We are also looking at, we're not asking the industry to do the 343.
Yes.
That is up to us. Because we want to manage the activity, and the only way we can do that is by managing the regulatory compliance process.
And, and last concern that has been brought up, that this would provide a free pass for people to do things, and it would basically encourage noncompliance.
No, that's an enforcement issue. You don't have a permit, you are not exempt. So we're not authorizing any new activity. There, you know, there are potentially new activities that we have not issued permits. They're not, they don't fall under this, this narrowly defined exemption.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I appreciate your response. Thanks for educating us about this bill. Okay, thank you very mu, yes.
Can I ask a question, just because you're, it's along your line of questioning?
Go ahead, Representative Bellotti.
OPSD offers striking the language of undertaken applicant. Does that hinder some of the, the things that you're trying to accomplish with your proposed amendments? Because I actually think that that might tighten up the language a little bit more.
And Representative Bellotti, I apologize. I did not read their, their, which section?
What I'm suggesting is that OPSD's amendment to strike or undertaken or applicant.
And that is under?
Page 14, line one and two, states that the subject activities include those, quote, something, and then they were suggesting taking out the words "or undertaken by an applicant."
Because then that takes out anything that's?
So it would read, notwithstanding any provision of this chapter to the contrary, when an activity that has been previously permitted or authorized by a state or county agency is challenged.
Yeah, I think we're okay with that because I think if anything, the undertaken was perhaps activities that we're doing, but I'm comfortable with, with deleting undertaken. Because it really was, this bill, as we understood it in our comments, were really designed just to address those who actually have an authorized permit.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, thanks very much to all the members for their questions and to the testifiers for your testimony and for the discussion. Let's move on to the next measure. House Bill 969, House Draft 1, relating to waste or disposal facilities. And just so everyone knows, we're going to go through all the bills and do decision-making at the end, so if you don't want to hang around, I understand. House Bill 969, HD1, relating to waste or disposal facilities. This measure prohibits the construction, modification, or expansion of any waste or disposal facility on land that is near or above a significant aquifer as determined by the Department of Health. First up, we have the Office of Hawaiian Affairs in support. Next, we have the Department of Health with comments on Zoom, in person. Oh, lucky us. Please proceed. Could you help with that, please?
I think it, I think.
Just tighten it underneath. Go ahead. She'll work on it in between the testifiers. Go ahead.
Aloha Chair Tarnas, Vice Chair Poi Poi, and committee members. Glenn Haai with the Department of Health. Department stands on this written testimony, offering comments. We respectfully ask the legislature to define significant aquifers. There can be many interpretations of significant aquifers, and depending on that interpretation or definition, this bill could effectively prohibit landfills in Hawaii. And as this, as this bill seeks to protect the environment, it is important to note that landfills also exist to protect the environment and public health through proper management of solid waste. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have written testimony from the City and County of Honolulu. Next, we have testimony from the Board of Water Supply of Honolulu.
Aloha Chair, Vice Chair and committee members. I am Joyce Lynn with the Honolulu Border Water Supply. We stand in strong support of House Bill 969, 969. As the municipal drink, as the largest municipal drinking water utility of Oahu, the Honolulu Border Water Supply has a constitutional public trust responsibly to protect our water resources. And House Bill 969 aligns with our mission to provide safe, dependable, and affordable drinking water to our, to the people of Oahu now and into the future. So thank you for the opportunity to testify, and we're here for any questions.
Thank you very much for being here. Next person that said they wish to testify is Chun James on Zoom, not present. Next person said they wish to testify is Kika Bukowski, not present. Next person is Mike Ewall on Zoom. Please proceed.
Aloha Chair Tarnas, Vice Chair Poi Poi, and members of the committee. My name is Mike Ewall, and I'm the founder and executive director of Energy Justice Network. Two of our member groups, Kakuana'a Ina and Hawaii's Clean Power Task Force, are local groups we've been working with on waste and energy issues in the state. And there's a lot of concern about the new landfill in Waihewa that is proposed. Why is it dangerous? Why are people so concerned? Well, they're concerned because a double-lined landfill full of HPower's trash incinerator ash can leach toxic chemicals into the aquifer eventually. If that is a concern, I think you would be even more concerned about taking the same material and spreading it all over the island with no liners in the form of building roads with this material and then driving all over it. These would be linear, unlined landfills in the form of roads that risk the aquifer and community health all over the island, and this is something that the city is proposing to do right now. Roger Babcock, representing on the City and County, in a presentation before the legislature on January 7th, held up a jar of ash from Bucks County, Pennsylvania, saying, "It's just like sand," and this is what the model plant that they're looking at to use and build in Campbell Industrial Park. Well, that project has apparently failed as they stopped using ash in roads over two years ago in September 2022, and never restarted the next year in 2023 as they planned. Similar projects have failed around the country. We urge you to amend this bill, just as Senate Bills 446 and Senate Bill 438 were amended to ban the use of this toxic incinerator ash in roads, construction, or as daily landfill cover. If it's too dangerous to have it, the same ash over the aquifer in a double-lined landfill, it's surely too dangerous to put in roads all over that aquifer with no liners. Mahalo.
Thanks very much. Next, Ryan Toyo Mura, or Miho Koito, on Zoom. Oh, no, in person. Please proceed.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair Ryan Toyo Mura, on behalf of ReWorld, formerly called Vanta ReWorld, operates the HPower facility out here in Honolulu or out in Kapale. We provide comments, just noting three issues. Reuse of the, the bottom ash aggregate will lead to potentially 60% savings in reduction of ash sent to the Waimea landfill. So that's something that I think would be helpful in terms of expanding the use of the existing landfill. Number two, the, the, what's, what's being used, what the previous testifier talked about regarding ash, is not really a representative of what the particular project the city is looking into right now. So currently, the fly ash versus the bottom ash aggregate are two different things, and what this project intends to do, or what, what our testimony refers to, is taking aggregate out of the bottom ash, which is something totally different from the fly ash, which has higher concentrations of these potentially toxic chemicals. And so those particular aggregates have passed EPA's TCLP standards. Additionally, the proposed amendments are really not germane to the existing bill in itself. So the existing bill is really about placement of, of landfills over aquifers, and I think that the amendments being proposed regarding the ash reuse ban are really not germane to this particular bill. So with that, we have, we have it answered. Any questions you might have?
Thank you very much for your testimony. Next, Ian Custino, the Moana'luua Gardens Foundation, on Zoom, not present. Next, Wayne Tanaka, not present. Next, Larry Meacham. You've been waiting so long, Larry. Thanks for your patience. Please proceed.
Larry Meacham, Waihewa resident, speaking as an individual in support of the bill. First of all, this is not a NIMBY matter. In fact, the aquifer, when it leaks, and it will leak eventually, will harm our neighbors in Waihewa and Haleeva, not us. We are against having such a landfill over any part of the aquifer at all. Second, we had a town hall meeting which 250 angry people showed up, so it's not just us. There's a lot of toxic metals in this, in these ashes. They will be, they will be coming out through the leach aid, which the city will pull and then take somewhere else. This, we just thought of a question to ask Mr. Babcock. When you purify that, that leach aid, where do you put the leftover matters in that? Do you put it back in the landfill or what? Anyway, that's an interesting question we should supply. The point is that all of these landfills will eventually leak. We don't know when, but they will eventually leak. And we have a responsibility to future generations to prevent that. Otherwise, they will look back at us how, that you let this happen. The other matter is that the city has just accepted the military's refusal to use any military land. That is not acceptable. They owe us big time. Red Hill leases are coming up. They should go back. For instance, they should consider Kalailoa, I feel. And finally, I'll leave it there.
Okay. Thanks, Mr. Meacham. Next, Kimmer Horson, not present. That's all the testifiers that said they wish to testify in this measure. Anyone else wishing to testify in 969? We've got three individuals, so go ahead first.
I'm going to go. Ted Boland for Waireef and Ocean Coalition. Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. We are in strong support of this bill. The people have argued that it's not a good idea to put a landfill over an aquifer are, I think, are right, and I think that's a reason that this bill should pass. I also would like to propose an amendment that they not use the same material for roads. That's Mr. Ewall, I think, was saying. And I've included that amendment in my testimony, and I reference it for your review. Happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Boland. Next, Angela Melody Young.
Angela Melody Young testifying, commenting. So geographic boundaries are very necessary to establish when we're talking about landfills. And so it's not just a Board of Water Supply aquifer issue, it's also a toxic emissions and pollution issues because it will require the building of a modern incinerator, I think, which produces the.
This bill is about the location of a landfill, so let's focus on that.
Right, so the landfill would require an incinerator.
That's not in the bill. So just focus on the bill.
Okay. So for the specificity of this bill, it should take into consideration the toxic dioxins and ferrens from the fly ash and the bottom ash, which will be produced from the landfill with an incinerator for the facilities to process the trash. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, Brian Miyamoto.
Aloha Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Brian Miyamoto here on behalf of the Hawaii Foreign Bureau. My apologies, Chair, we thought we submitted testimony, maybe we didn't click that we wanted a testifying person. If you don't have it, we will get the committee, our testimony, in support.
We have your testimony. Just didn't know you were going to be testifying in.
Thank you, Chair.
Go ahead.
My apologies. You know, there's been a lot of discussion about locations of a landfill, new landfill, especially since the city's has identified outside of Waihewa. And so there's a lot of discussion on protecting our precious groundwater and protecting our precious drinking water, which is absolutely the priority, critical, and important. Farm Bureau wants to bring up the issue of protecting our precious groundwater resources for agriculture also. So if there's potential for contamination to our drinking water, it applies for agriculture, for our, our farms, for irrigation, and for our livestock. So again, we wanted to bring that up, and we don't think it's a good idea. I know this is not about agricultural lands, but over aquifers, precious water resource that is necessary for agriculture. So again, our precious drinking water, we need to protect that. But also, this water is used for agricultural purposes, and if we're going to achieve our goals of doubling food supply, institutional purchasing for farm to school, farm to state, and just growing our sector, we need clean water. No water, no agriculture. No agriculture, no food. We support this measure. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miyamoto. Okay, that's all the testimony on this measure. Any questions, members? No questions? It was very persuasive testimony. Thank you very much. Let's move on to the next measure. House Bill 732, House Draft 1, relating to shoreline management areas. This measure increases the valuation of development that determines the necessity of a special management area minor permit or special management area use permit to 750,000 and requires that amount to be adjusted every five years for inflation. It allows single-family residences that are less than 3,500 square feet in floor area and not part of a larger development, regardless of development valuation, to be eligible for a special management area minor permit. On House Bill 732, first up, Office of Planning and Sustainable Development.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, and a member of committee. My name is Shisani, the Office of Planning and Sustainable Development. Our office stand our written testimony in support of this bill with amendment. But amendment really important. That's it. Thank you.
You want to explain what the amendment is that's so important?
Yes. The reason, because every five years, adjustment for inflation should be after effect of the, this bill, if approved, get effect this act, then after five years will be adjust, instead of the, right now, the language is just, adjusted right now, then after five years. That's totally meaningful, the change already.
Very important. Appreciate the explanation.
The other one is the and, and is also important.
Yes.
Thank you.
Words are so important. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have testimony in support from Jordan Hart from the County of Maui Office of Recovery on Zoom. Please proceed.
Aloha Chair and members. This is Jordan Hart. On behalf of the Office of Recovery, I apologize, I'm not.
No, go ahead. We hear you. We hear you.
Okay.
Go ahead.
In any case, we strongly support this bill. The, the assessment of, the assessment of a minor action is interpreted by dollar value, and the last time that was updated was in 2014, up to $500,000. Obviously, there was. Obviously, there has been significant inflation in that time, including additional inflation locally in Lahaina. And so this would be the appropriate interpretation of that legislation to adjust for the value of the dollar. Minor permits are able to be administratively approved. That greatly cuts down on the cost and time of completing smaller projects and actions for applicants. This would greatly assist people across the state, specifically people in Lahaina in their rebuild effort. And I would like to point out that pursuant to HRS 205A, each of the authorities assigned for the administration of the special management area in their areas, on their islands or in this, on their islands, and in the case of Maui County, the individual planning commissions have the ability to amend their administrative rules, to further tailor their localized administration and regulation of this process. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hart. Next, we have Richard Bisson, Office of the Mayor of County of Maui, on Zoom. Not present. He's a busy guy. I'm not surprised. That's okay. Next, we have Lindsay Garcia, Waive Realtors. Not present. That's all the testifiers we have that have, who have indicated to us they wish to testify. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on House Bill 732, House Draft 1? If not, questions, members? No questions. Thanks very much. We'll move on to the next measure. House Bill 1137, House Draft 1, relating to restoration of beach lands. This measure amends the definition of beach restoration to include activities undertaken to maintain and improve eroded beaches and degraded dune systems through the management of sand and native vegetation, placement of sand, and activities undertaken to remove abandoned and remnant materials that pose a risk to public and ecosystem health. First up, we have Chip Fletcher, University of Hawaii, in support. Not present. Next, Michael Kane, Department of Land and Natural Resources. Oh, Chair, you are covering all of your different divisions today. Thank you for being here.
Oh, no, I think it's, I think it's respectful that I should show up when I can.
Thank you.
I'm not always able to do this.
Appreciate you being here. Please proceed.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the committee. Don Chang, Chair of the Board of Land and Natural Resources. We stand in strong support of this bill. This is actually an admin bill. It does permit us, by broadening the definition, it will permit us to expand the scope of what we include in beach restoration. So this is a necessary bill.
Thank you very much. Next person that said they wish to testify is Mylea Pax, on Zoom. Please proceed.
Aloha, Chairs and Committee members. My name is Mylea Pax, and I'm a resident of Honolulu and a student at UH Manoa. I support HB 1137. Since moving to Hawaii, I have come to appreciate how vital the beaches are, not just for recreation, but for environment and local communities. I've witnessed erosion eating away at shorelines and seen abandoned debris that threaten public safety and marine life. Without action, these impacts will only worsen with the rising sea levels. This bill takes proactive and necessary approach to protecting Hawaii's coastal lines. I urge you to pass HB 1137 to ensure our beaches remain safe, accessible, and resilient for future generations. Mahalo.
Mahalo. Next, we have Arlene Velasco. In support? Not present. Next and last, Erica Skyler Holokai, on Zoom. Please proceed.
Hi, guys. My name is Erica Holokai, student at UH Manoa, and have been a resident of Hawaii my entire life. I'm here today in support of HB 1137, which expands the definition of beach restoration to include crucial activities such as sand and dune system management and placement, the removal of hazardous materials from coastal areas. Ever since I was a kid, my family and I always took the same beaches, but due to rising issues, or there's been a drastic change in the beaches, like the water levels are higher, there's more rock than sand, or the beach in general just looks smaller than it once was. This bill is an important step, and we have left, expanding on the definition of beach restoration, allows us to be more proactive in preserving our beaches, ensuring that they remain of true significance and environmental sustainability. And by efforts such as native dune vegetation management and the removal of hazardous debris, this bill recognizes that the beach restoration is more than just dumping sand and restoring our ecosystems. Again, I'm in support, and thank you, folks, for your time.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to testify on House Bill 1137? If not, questions, members? Representative Shumizu, please proceed.
Thank you, Chair, for DLNR. Thank you, Director, for being here. I really appreciate your attendance and all of your wealth of knowledge, and thank you for leading that important department. I'm going to ask a dumb question. You know, just, I'm learning so much, and as I just read this, it's almost in my simple mind wondering, how does this language, just adding or broadening the definition, make that much of a difference to your operations? Because in my mind, I'm thinking, if you need to do something, it needs to get done, and you'll do it.
Thank you very much, Representative. Good question. Currently, the current definition is rather limiting. It lets us move sand, but we're finding that there's better tools restoring sand dunes with natural vegetation. That doesn't necessarily fall under the definition of beach restoration. We do provide grants and funds for those, so if it's not authorized, we're not able to fund it. So this bill will, through the broadening of the definition, provides us more tools, especially to work with communities who can help us do some of that restoration.
Okay, thank you for that kind answer to that dumb question.
No, that wasn't a dumb question.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? Any questions are allowed? Okay, thanks very much. We'll move on to the next measure. House Bill 1138. All right, that's, yeah, 1138, House Draft 1, relating to ocean user safety. This measure authorizes the Board of Land and Natural Resources to issue emergency rules, which may be in effect for up to 365 days, for the regulation of commercial and recreational use of water sports equipment to promote ocean user safety. First up, we have Megan Stats. Oh, okay. Boy, the chief is here.
I know, but I've got all the experts. They are available to answer any questions.
That's good. Please proceed, Chair Chang.
Thank you very much. So, good afternoon, Chair and Vice Chair and members of the committee. Don Chang, Chair of the Board of Land and Natural Resources. This is an admin bill. We stand in strong support. We recognize that there is an emergency rulemaking procedure, 91-3B. It only lasts us four months. To do actual rulemaking, it takes us a lot longer. So we are asking for this longer period of time to adapt to a very changing industry. The technology or the equipment that they're using for various sports equipment keeps on evolving, so we need to be able to timely respond. So that's what this provides us, the opportunity to timely respond to new equipment in our ocean waters. We recognize there are many people who are complying, and we appreciate those who are complying with the rules, but this is for those who aren't. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next person said they want to testify is Eli Spivak, Maui Wing Foil and Wingsurfing, on Zoom. Please proceed.
Thank you. Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the committee. Can you hear me?
Yes, we hear you. Please proceed.
Yes, thank you. I am opposed to this bill, and although it does have a very sort of concrete change of the ruling from the 120-day period to a one-year period, who it is going to be affecting is vague in a way. I am the administrator of a Facebook group called Maui Wing Foil and Wingsurfing, and we here on Maui have worked it out amongst ourselves, how to work with other groups that use the harbor, for instance, Kahului Harbor, so that we can be pono and everyone can stay in their lane and not get into each other's way. And I think that is the way to be proceeding with state Hawaii waters. We do have a strong statewide group of people who are in the foiling industry, who are recreational users and the like, who are stakeholders. And I think if we disseminate information like we have done here on Maui and have a good communication with our stakeholders, then we can avoid having problems with regards to what we do, which is a new technology that is basically targeted in this rule, that we can settle things on our own by providing guidelines for people using the water. And we've been very successful here on Maui, and I think this can be done statewide. For me, to change the ruling from 120 days to 365 days does not make sense, because there are businesses involved, there are people who come here to do these certain sports, and for them to be, you know, restricted from doing that is against the economy of the state of Hawaii and against people's, what they'd like to do for recreation. And that is why I am opposed. Thank you very much for hearing me out.
Sure.
And I can accept any questions if you have.
Thank you very much. Next, Zachary LaPrade, on Zoom. Zachary LaPrade. No. Okay. Next, Alika Ferreira, on Zoom.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, and Committee members. My name is Alika. I live on the island of Oahu. I oppose this bill along with at least 78 written testimonies submitted for opposition of this bill. And I stand on my written testimony, but I did want to highlight the main reason why we oppose this. I am primarily in the foiling industry, riding on various foil boards. And although this bill is not targeting foils, it's targeting water sports equipment. And for the past four years, we've had to defend our position and oppose bills at the House and the State Senate level. With this bill that passes, there will be much less barriers for the rules to be put in place. The Board of Land and Natural Resources will be able to prevent any foiling and various other water sports equipment from being operated in state waters, just at the board level, just at the board level of hearing and public notice, if any. And it'll last a full year. In the past, with the State House and the State Senate, the bill rose to the state level by a single swimmer making a complaint. He was influential, he was powerful, he had the ear of a Maui committee, not committee member, but council member, and they took it up through the Maui package. That was a single swimmer arguing about one simple incident in his perfect swim zone that he loves. You can't ban a sport or an activity based upon one person's complaint. And that's my concern, is that this is much broader reaching, and it's going to be handled at a lower level. And I oppose this bill. I hope you'll consider it. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Ferreira. Next person said they wish to testify is Kate Thompson.
Good afternoon. My name is Kate Thompson, Chair Tarnas, and Vice Chair Poipoez not here, and Committee members, great to see you today. I am a sailboat owner at the Aloeis Small Boat Harbor. I do not live on my boat, it's just for recreation. I live in Kailua, actually. But I commute back and forth to sail, and I'm like a retired state worker who golfs, except for I sail. So I sail two or three times a week. I really enjoy it. I've been pretty involved in things to do with Division of Boating over the last four years, and I've had a little bit more time to get involved. And I'm concerned about this bill, HB 1138, because what is happening a lot of times is that they're, the board, we feel, is, although they're nice people and want to do their best, they are volunteers, they are not elected, they're assigned by the governor, approved by the Senate and House, and they, we're finding that they can't really go super deep into all the details of the contracts and nuances, and that the responsibility really lies with the Board DLNR to interact with the public. So one of the questions that Rep. Shumizu brought up is what can be done? And I guess, I'm hearing some whispering. Thank you.
Just go ahead and speak. We're listening to you, not anything else.
And, yeah, good. Thank you very much. So I'm with Rep. Shumizu's question to DLNR Chair earlier was, what can be done? And I guess what we're recommending with the 70 or 80 people testemoning opposing this bill from the public and the boating and waterways groups, is that we have, that the Senate recommends and the House recommends that there are quarterly Zoom public meetings, because although in Act 100, they, the Board DLNR says they're having regular meetings, they haven't had regular meetings since well before COVID. So we think that a lot of these things could be straightened out with some regular meetings, some agenda items, maybe they take Maui one quarter, they take Oahu one quarter. Thank you.
Summarize, please.
Yes, so my summary is, we oppose lengthening. This is 120 days already, which is perfect for emergencies, and extending will reduce the amount of required public interaction. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your advocacy. Next, John McCabe, on Zoom. Not present. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on House Bill 1138? Seeing non-questions, members? Representative Shumizu.
Thank you, Chair. I have a question for DLNR. Thank you again, Chair. I mean, Director, excuse me. In BLNR's testimony, it says there is overuse of boating facilities, strain on natural resources, user conflicts. And I'm wondering, is this, this statement based on some kind of record-keeping or data analysis?
Thank you for the question. I've got Megan Stats, our administrator. Megan, maybe you can provide a response.
Aloha, Rep. Megan Stats, I'm the administrator for the Division of Boating and Ocean Recreation. I think you asked this question the last time that we had the hearing, in regards to whether or not we keep specific records about incidents or complaints that come through. We don't have actual documentation and written. This is just what our staff sees on a regular basis, because they're at the facilities and around the ocean waters on a daily basis.
Okay, Chair, can I ask another question?
Yes.
Okay, so my understanding is currently it's a 100-day period, and the bill would extend it to 365 days, and part of the reason is DLNR needs more time to process. So are you saying that currently, 120 days, you guys are not able to get your business done?
So for emergency rulemaking, currently, it is 120 days. And we did an emergency rulemaking specifically for small boat harbor closures. That four months came and went before you can do the process of long-term rules. And I could go through the process of, we have to draft the rule up, we have to go through the deputy AG's office, then we have to go to the Board of Land and Natural Resources, the Small Business Regulatory Review Board, that's asking to go to public hearing. The governor has to approve that. Then we'll go out to public hearing. If there's any changes during public hearing, we bring the rule back, specifically goes to the AGs. As long as there's no substantive changes, then we can go back to the Board of Land and Natural Resources. And mind you, there's public input throughout this entire process, right? And then we go back to the Small Business Regulatory Review Board, then we go back to the governor's office, and then the governor signs that. That process can take anywhere from a year to two years. It really just depends on how complex the rules are.
Chair, one follow-up question?
Yep, one more question, yes.
Okay, so I appreciate you jumping through all those hoops and you confirming that 365 is not enough. So with 120 days that, as you have right now, as is, you folks can't get anything done then, and it just, whatever action is required, there's no, you're not able to do it in 120 days, so it doesn't get done. Is that a, is that a fact?
Yeah, that's correct. We're not able to go through that entire rulemaking process within the 120 days. And the 365 would be a lot, a lot, a lot more time for us to go through the long-term process.
But if I, if I can just add, Rep. Shumizu, so we're not doing nothing, so we are, so, yeah, no, no, so during that period of time, so I think the problem is, the four months is insufficient time for us to do rulemaking. So even under the emergency rules, the intention is that there's a, there's an interim process for these emergency rules, and then you go through regular rulemaking process. And that's taking, and so And that's taking, and so we don't have enough time, given the description that Megan had. I do want to address the public participation. So even under the rulemaking process, it goes to the land board at least twice. And that is a public meeting, and public members participate. It's an open meeting, sunshine meeting. Also, there's a requirement to do a public hearing. So there's a third public process. May not be all public hearings, but there's one public hearing, two publicly noticed land board meetings, that we get a lot of participation. So one, we feel that this bill attempts to address the emergency. We're not necessarily trying to regulate an industry unless there's a complaint. I mean, so we were getting complaints about e-foils, about some of, you know, going into swim zones, interfering, not all. I mean, there were some people on the screen that are very compliant, but it's the ones who aren't compliant. So this process permits us the opportunity to make rulemaking and conduct it in a public process.
So if it's an emergency, maybe instead of extending the period, we should improve the process so we can make decisions faster?
That's another bill. It's a different bill.
Okay. Thank you so much. Thank you for your patience, Chair.
No, no, no. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Other questions, members? Representative Russo?
If you could please stay up. So I just, I'm hoping for some clarification because we heard in testimony that, you know, you folks, or DoBar is no longer having regular or quarterly meetings with surfers and folks using, you know, that infrastructure. And I'm wondering how those regular meetings used to play into your ability to facilitate this process more easily? Because it sounds like your emergency process is very top-down, like you consult with the public kind of after the fact. And it strikes me that it's possible that this could be facilitated and speeded up if you were already having these regular quarterly meetings. And I'm wondering why that's not happening.
Well, I'll let Megan describe what the previous maybe quarterly meetings. We work on a site-specific. So Kiki'ola on Kauai, we'll have a meeting there when we're proposing an activity. We'll have a meeting in, you know, if we have, at Honakohau. So depending on the specific facility, we will dedicate meetings to that facility. We don't generally have quarterly meetings with all the boating community. We meet with fishers once a month, both the Lavaia Pono, native Hawaiian fishing community. We also meet with, they're called the Fishers Working Group Committee. We meet with them once a month. So there are existing vehicles for us to have meetings, but most of our meetings with communities are site-specific. When we are proposing, so for example, Pohoeiki on Hawaii Island, we're proposing a dredging project. Then our engineer, he has met with them on a regular basis. We provide regular updates. Waileua dredging, we provide updates on a regular basis as we're moving forward with those improvements. So again, we're trying to utilize our capacity in the most efficient way to the impacted community.
Thank you. Just a quick follow-up question, though. So what I am still hearing you say is that, or you haven't really contradicted my idea or my analysis, that you folks go gather public input after you've gone through some extensive process already of emergency rulemaking? And then I assume you use the same process with the more extended rulemaking process? So have you considered reversing that order a bit so that you go and get community input first? So that you, I mean, it just strikes me that there might be a great deal of positive contribution that could be made in that process.
No, appreciate that. I mean, I don't want to make any excuses. We do have a capacity issue, so we're trying to, essentially, sort of triaging it. It's as issues come up, trying to identify that. So in Alawaye, we've had meetings out there. When we have Kahalu Surf School, we've had numerous meetings out there. So again, we're really trying to be very site-specific so that we are customizing the issues and the responses to that particular site. But it is a requirement when we're proposing rules that we have to do public meetings, public hearings. And then we do land board meetings. So could we do more? Obviously, yes. Should we do more? If I had more capacity, I would.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Can I add something just really quick? So if we just received one complaint about a particular location, that's not something we're going to go out and do, right? We would make sure that we would go speak with the community. We've done it in areas specifically, like in Kailua, for example, by the boat ramp, where you would have some conflicts between swimmers and boaters or paddlers. So we've met with community, we've gone out and had those meetings, right? Because it doesn't, somebody can make a complaint once, but that doesn't necessarily mean that there's an issue that we need to address with the emergency rulemaking, right? We need to make sure that we're doing our due diligence and get all the information before we do take something to the board.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much, Chair.
Rep Alati. Two quick questions. The last time you folks used the rule, what kind of activity did you regulate?
The emergency rule that we've done was the closure of the small boat harbors to address some of the nefarious activity that was taking place specifically out in Waianae Small Boat Harbor.
Okay. And then what was the last time you used either the 120-day rule or an emergency rule for some kind of sports equipment that this is appearing to want to regulate?
We have not.
Okay. So in some of the testimony before us, there's a suggestion that to limit the scope to motorized and battery-powered water sports equipment. I mean, are you looking at other technologies that are beyond that, that you need emergency rulemaking authority for?
No. So e-foils are designated by the United States Coast Guard as a motorized vessel. That's a boat, in a sense. It's a motorized vessel. So when we're talking about water sports equipment, we have a definition. And the definition in our rules means any equipment, contrivance, frame, or other device that one or more persons may wear, lie, sit, or stand upon, or in, and which is primarily used in or on the water for pleasure, recreation, or sports, and not necessarily for transportation. So that's where we seem to be having a lot of the issues is the water sports equipment, the new types of activities or things that are coming forth and causing problems with other users.
Well, I guess, I don't know what those things are. And so if you can't give any examples, like what tangibly is that? Like something that's coming?
Well, we could say foils, not an e-foil. You could say a foil. There's drone surfing, there is wing foiling, there's kite surfing. I mean, you name that type of stuff, I can, those are some specifics.
That's the things you want to work.
Right. But not specifically e-foils. But yes, foiling of some sort that is not motorized.
Thank you.
Sure. Thank you.
And if I could just make a final, I mean, Rep Alati, that's exactly why we're looking at this. We don't know what the new equipment's coming up with, so we need a mechanism to timely respond. Thank you.
So just, I have a question real quick. So e-foils, you know, the various water sports equipment you just described have been around for years. They're not new. Four years ago, I think we had the bill to, that former Representative Wildberger put in about e-foils. And I remember distinctly, because I was Chair of the Water and Land Committee, saying, "We're not going to pass this bill out. DoBar, you need to do rules." Have you done rules?
So we have not done rules because there was a Coast Guard determination that was made about what an e-foil is. I think when we went to that hearing, that was specifically to designate an e-foil as a throwcraft.
Yeah, as a throwcraft, yeah.
And so because they have designated it as a motorized vessel, in our rules, it is addressed as a motorized vessel. Not specifically as an e-foil, but a motorized vessel. There are locations they can and cannot go.
So this measure, you're not contemplating using this to address e-foils?
No.
So it's important for people who are listening that that's what you're talking about?
Yes.
Now, the other technologies that you referred to have also been around for several years. They're not new. Why haven't you started to do rulemaking on these years ago, and it's now an emergency, and you need to pass this bill to deal with it? Is it capacity?
Capacity. We have not had somebody to write our rules until just recently. We just hired a legal fellow within the last two to three weeks. And that individual will be working on proposed amendments to our rules.
Got it. Okay. So you're seeking this emergency authority because you don't have the capacity to do it in a timely manner?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Oh, do you have a question, Vice?
For DLNR.
Vice Chair.
My question is similar or identical to my previous questions because this also has to deal with commercial regulation of water sport equipment, this bill.
It's both.
Yes.
It's the activity. It's recreational or commercial.
And the commercial.
Correct.
Okay. So again, I think this is a yes, yes or no questions. Does the state have a duty to protect the public trust resources under the DLNR?
Yes.
Does the state have a duty to issue commercial permits?
Does it have a duty?
A duty.
What we have is, we have authorization. So we have authorization to issue.
But those are different. A duty and authorization are different.
But it is, so unless the law prohibits an activity, we're authorized to permit that. So we will have, and that was the aquarium fishing.
Yeah.
Because it wasn't banned, so a petition was filed to issue a permit. So unless the legislature deems it not appropriate, it's an authorized activity. And yes, we have to balance.
Do you have to make a finding that it is not contradictory or to or negatively impacting? I'm just trying, it's still a question of the balancing that hasn't been resolved for me.
And I'm probably, we're probably not going to be able to resolve that. I mean, we're, we are taking into consideration environmental issues, cultural issues, that we perhaps have not previously taken into consideration. So we think that there may be different outcomes when we start doing that. But we're changing, again, it's been historically, this has primarily been under, you know, commercial. So we are trying very hard to find that balance, but at the same time recognizing that people have come forward and said, not that they have an entitlement, but if the rules, if the law permits it, it is, it is very hard to say we're not going to permit it and authorize it. So we're trying to manage and regulate it. If we don't regulate it, then it becomes an unmanaged activity where they probably cause even more havoc to the public trust resources.
Okay. So in trying to find the balance?
Yeah.
Again, you have the public trust and the resource itself, the public, the general public, and the commercial side. How do you prioritize 1, 2, 3? Will, like, do you have, which is 1, 2, 3? And then how do you, do you have an internal process that you work through or, you know, a flow chart that helps guide you through making those decisions in a more, like, systematic way?
My answer is not going to be pretty satisfactory. We don't have a priority list. We are trying to be much more deliberate and methodical about how we're looking at all these activities. That's why, one, we recognize the line of case law is telling us 343 applies. So we are taking that into consideration. We are applying the Kapiakai analysis when activities come forward. So we are, there's a lot of activities that have been established that we're trying to catch up.
Okay. And then my last question is just, you know, kind of based on the previous conversation as well. For the commercial side of this, is that going to require HIPAA compliance as well?
Yes. If it's an activity, whether it's commercial or recreational, the impacts may be, will be the same.
Okay.
So we look at both.
So you would also do the analysis for that?
And probably commercial would be even a more heightened scrutiny because they're, you know, it's not for recreational purposes. But yes, the 343 would apply to both activities.
So you would be conducting that as well?
Yes.
Okay.
The 343 analysis? Yes.
Okay. Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Any other questions? If not, thanks very much to the testifiers. Let's move on to the next measure. House Bill 1141, House Draft 1, relating to updating public land leases issued pursuant to Chapter 171 Hawaii Revised Statutes. This requires that lease extensions approved by the Board of Land and Natural Resources be drafted on forms that reflect contemporary leasing practices and policies of the Board, and which shall control over conflicting or inconsistent provisions in the lease being extended. First up, we have Department of Land and Natural Resources. Chair, welcome. Please proceed.
I'm back, I'm back.
Yes, we're grateful you're here.
No, thank you very much, Chair and Vice Chair, and members of the committee. This is an admin bill, and we stand in strong support. This actually was a recommendation made by the Auditor's Report of 2019, in 2019, and likewise, the House Investigative Committee. We have had somewhat inconsistent, or we have had legal opinions that have said we have to treat lease extensions differently, whether it's a public auction or whether it's a negotiation. This law will permit us to treat them all the same. Any lease extension would incorporate the most up-to-date lease provisions.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to testify in House Bill 1141, House Draft 1? If not, questions, members? Seeing none, we'll move on. Thanks very much to the testifier. Next is House Bill 1348, House Draft 1, relating to public lands. This measure authorizes the Board of Land and Natural Resources to lease public lands for recreational residential use by public lottery and restrict participation in the public lottery to residents of the county in which the leased land is located. First up, Alan Carpenter, DLNR State Parks, or Chair.
Alan is going to be here to answer any specific questions.
Okay, Chair Chang.
So thank you very much, Chair and Vice Chair, Don Chang, on behalf of the Department of Land and Natural Resources. We stand in strong support of this bill. This is, at this point in time, this primarily applies to the Kokei leases, and it does permit, because there's a specific definition for recreational, these recreational leases. So we stand in strong support, and if we are available, both Alan and I, to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. And Chipper Wickman on Zoom from the Kokei Leaseholder Association, not present. Anyone else wishing to testify in this measure? We've received 31 testimonies in support in writing. Anyone else here wanting to testify in House Bill 1348? If not, questions, members? Seeing none, thanks very much to DLNR for being here for this. And we'll move on to the next measure. House Bill 1087, relating to Historic Preservation Reviews. This measure allows the Department of Hawaiian Homelands to assume historic preservation review of the effect of any proposed project for lands under its jurisdiction, except for projects affecting properties listed or nominated for inclusion in the Hawaii Register of Historic Places or the National Register of Historic Places. It also transfers the administrative placement of the island burial councils to the Office of Hawaiian Affairs. First up, we have the Department of Hawaiian Homelands.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, O'Oriana Lea Ko'oinoa, Maiko Oihana, Aina Ho'opula Pula Hawaii, also known as the Department of Hawaiian Homelands. DHHL stands on its written testimony in support of this measure with our noted comment that we prefer the original version of HB 1087, which was approved by the Hawaiian Homes Commission and included in the governor's administrative package. The original intent of the original version of this bill, as you noted, is for DHHL to assume the responsibility of review of historic preservation review. And concerning the Second Amendment regarding island burial councils and the transfer of the administrative responsibilities from DLNR to OHA, we defer to those agencies as well as this body on what is best concerning that matter. I'm available for questions. Mahalo.
Thank you very much. Next, Jessica Puff, State Historic Preservation Division, or the Chair.
I'm going to take it.
Okay.
This is the last one I'm going to take.
Okay, Chair Chang, thank you.
Jessica's here. Jessica's here to answer any questions. So again, Chair and Vice Chair, members of the committee, Don Chang, on behalf of the Department of Land and Natural Resources. One, we do, we offer comments on this bill. We support the intent of this bill. DHHL assuming responsibility. I think our comment is that there should be some standard qualifications for those positions. I think with respect to the island burial councils being
I think with respect to the island burial councils being transferred to the Office of Hawaiian Affairs, likewise, we do support the intent of this measure. I think we believe that the burial councils, OHA, it's been difficult because DLNR, we're both the regulator, we review all the permits, we review the archaeological work, and so, one, trying to also be an advocate for the burial councils, that it may be better suited within Office of Hawaiian Affairs, who both has the network to help especially selection of burial council members. For the longest time, we've had a problem with quorum, although most recently, the Governor did not, did come down with a very long list of nominees for the burial councils. But I think with having OHA's expertise and network in the Hawaiian community, they may be much better suited than we are to encourage members to become council members. So with that, we're going to stand on our testimony, but both Jessica and I are available to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Next, we have Office of Hawaiian Affairs.
Aloha Chair Tarnas, Vice Chair Boi Boi, members of the committee. Kamakana Ferreira, the lead compliance specialist with the Office of Hawaiian Affairs. We stand on our testimony, which we support with comments, and as we've done in past sessions, we do support the concept of DHHL assuming their historic preservation reviews, but like what Don had shared about qualifications, we also prefer that there be assurances that they have the proper qualifications to carry out those reviews, and so we have some suggested language there. And then in regards to OHA assuming administration of the island burial councils, this is something that we have talked about with DLNR. But we are proposing, we are going to propose a REZO for a feasibility study first, because I think there are a lot of financial concerns as well as administrative rules that need to be changed. We don't think OHA has the ability to do rulemaking, and we might depend heavily on DLNR for that. And so there's just more questions than answers. Not that OHA wouldn't take, take the responsibility, but we'd also like to take it back to our trustees to decide, especially since there'll be a large financial obligation to it. So we look forward to putting forth that REZO and including DLNR as part of that, that process.
Thank you. And then we have also, we have also received written testimony from the Historic Hawaii Foundation in opposition. Anyone else wishing to testify in House Bill 1087? If not, questions, members? Okay, go ahead, Vice Chair.
Or me, OHA or SHPD? I'm not sure.
Got to pick.
Okay, for OHA, and then if OHA doesn't have the answer, then I'll ask SHPD. Have you consulted with the burial councils or burial council members on whether, you know, how they feel about being moved to OHA?
We have not, which is why as part of the REZO that we're putting forward is to have a member from each of the island burial councils to participate in the feasibility study.
Okay. Has SHPD consulted with burial councils or burial council members? I know there's been quorum issues, but.
Jessica Puff, I'm the administrator of SHPD, thank you. We have not consulted with any, formally with any burial council members. It has not been agendized in any of the burial council agendas.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? I do have a question for Office of Hawaiian Affairs. In your testimony, you actually asked that the bill establish a working group to determine a process for transferring the administration of the burial councils from SHPD to OHA. You also said it sounds like you're preparing a resolution for somebody to introduce. Is that, so is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. So, I mean, what could happen? You could strike the language that calls for.
So give me your recommendation, because it's unclear whether you want me to establish the working group in the bill, or you want me to strike the language, and then you want to pursue this working group in a separate resolution.
Right, we should strike the language, and we should move forward with the REZO. It was, it was kind of happening concurrently, and I think there was a little bit of rush to get the testimony, and so it's best, I think, just to scratch, remove the language referring to OHA, and then OHA will pursue the REZO as I had discussed before.
Okay, all right, I just wanted to be clear about that. Okay, thank you. Any other questions, members? If not, let's move on to the next measure. We're getting, getting close to the end here. Second to last measure on the hearing agenda. House Bill 226, House Draft 2, relating to windshield tinting. This prohibits a person from installing, mounting, adhering, affixing, or using any sunscreening device in conjunction with the glazing material of a motor vehicle with mirrored metallic red, yellow, amber, or blue tint, et cetera. I'm not going to read the whole thing. First up, we have the Department of Transportation in support on Zoom.
Aloha Chair Tarnas, Dre Kulee for the Department of Transportation. We stand in strong support on our written testimony and are available for questions. Thank you.
Wow, they got you working on this one too, on windshield tinting. That's a deputy director who's heading commercial harbors. You're very talented, you cover everything. Windshield tinting, commercial harbors. Thanks very much, Dre. Okay, we've received written testimony from one, two, three, four, five individuals in support and one in opposition. Is there anyone else wishing to testify in House Bill 226, House Draft 2? If not, questions, members? Seeing none, thank you very much to the testifiers. Let's move on to the last measure, which is commercial harbors related. House Bill 1159, House Draft 1, relating to commercial harbors. This measure requires masters or persons in charge of vessels to follow an order by a harbor master to evacuate a commercial harbor in emergencies. It establishes higher penalties for noncompliance and includes fines collected for violations to be paid into the Harbor Special Fund. First up, we have Department of Transportation.
Aloha Chair Tarnas, Dre Kulee, Deputy Director of the Department for Harbors. We stand in very strong support of this. This is a priority bill that was included, it's an admin bill. And I will add, in addition to what we did include in our written testimony, I just want to note that this applies only to commercial harbors, it does not apply to DOR facilities, and it also aligns with the U.S. Coast Guard's Maritime Heavy Weather Plan, which applies to all our commercial ports statewide. So I think some other testimonies might include some comments about conflict with Coast Guard, but this aligns very well with our existing operations and coordination with the Coast Guard. And we're available for questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Deputy Director. Next, we have testimony from the Hawaii Emergency Management Agency. Welcome, please proceed.
Aloha Chair Tarnas, Vice Chair Boi Boi, and members of the committee. Don Avia Haime, Executive Officer. Although not as famous, prolific, or talented as my native Hawaiian counterparts, Haime not to disappoint today. Haime is in strong support of House Bill 1159. This bill is crucial to enhancing the safety and security of Hawaii's commercial harbors during natural disasters and emergencies. In my experience with nationwide disasters when I was with FEMA, preparedness actions are effective in restoring harbor operations quickly after a disaster, as delays can disrupt critical supply chains for days or even weeks. Haime is committed to collaborating with DOT and stakeholders to safeguard our harbors. This legislation aligns with our mission to strengthen our emergency preparedness, response, and recovery efforts statewide. Here for any questions?
Mahalo.
Thank you.
Next, Daniel Hazen, HoloHolo Charters on Zoom. Please proceed.
Hello, Chair, Vice Chair and Committee members. My name is Daniel Hazen, I'm the Operations Manager of HoloHolo Charters on the southwest side of Hawaii. Thank you for the opportunity to expand on my written testimony in opposition to HB 1159 as it's written. My understanding is the bill's intent is to protect Hawaii's critical infrastructure and its harbors, wars, and piers from damage or blockage during severe weather conditions. I would like to respectfully request an amendment exempting vessels under 100 gross tons. While most small operators in Hawaii operate out of DLNR harbors, there are still several of us that operate out of DOT harbors. We don't pose the same risk as the large vessels and are not capable of evacuating a harbor into hazardous sea conditions without threats to vessels and ultimately lives. Any reasonable operator will not put these vessels and team members at risk, so could ultimately be facing fines that, for lack of a better word, are designed for these large companies. Small operators are in constant communication with their local harbor master and afford an effective working relationship, keeping safety and infrastructure in mind. I'd like to ask that you examine this bill, consider consequences that may not have been intended. I thank you for your time, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Zachary LaPrade with Ocean Tourism Coalition, not, not present. Anyone else wishing to testify on House Bill 1159? If not, questions, members? I just have a couple of questions. Oh, go ahead, Representative Shimizu.
I have a question for Department of Transportation. Aloha. Question is, the concerns that were expressed by the previous testifier about concerns that vessels under 100 GRT are put in harm's way out in the open ocean? And I also read another testimony that they, they are able to provide an acceptable docking plan. So would you be able to comment on that?
Yes, thank you, Rep. Shimizu, happy to. So first of all, the bill before you does not require vessels to evacuate into open ocean, it just is to evacuate out of the commercial port. And so from my understanding, the previous testifier's vessel does not berth at the commercial port at, at Hawaii, and so the bill would not apply to their operation for evacuation. I think the other thing is that, you know, there have been cases, and I'll defer to those in the room from Haime, where we have vessels much smaller than 100 gross tons that can cause severe damage to a port facility. And it's not just damage to the pier, but it could be sinking. We've had vessels that are smaller than 100 gross tons break loose from mooring, not even in a hurricane, just in heavy, heavy rain. And it'll sink or ground on the breakwater, and it will impede the ability of cargo vessels, including tugs and barges, from transiting into the commercial port. So I'll just, I think I've addressed the two questions, and checking if you have any follow-up questions.
Thank you, thank you very much. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. Other questions? Just following up, for Deputy Director, when I forwarded to you the testimony that came in on this measure from those who were concerned and were asking for exemptions, it was clear that you, this is not going to be in conflict with the Coast Guard. And if you could, if you could describe how you make sure that this is not going to be in conflict with the Coast Guard?
Sure, happy to explain the process. So it is the captain of the port for the U.S. Coast Guard that determines when a port is going to be closed. And as we approach what they call Port Condition Zulu, which is the closure of a commercial port, we have a process, and it is subject to the U.S., United States Coast Guard Maritime Heavy Weather Plan, which is applicable, it is site-specific, and it is applicable to all commercial ports statewide here in Hawaii. And for vessels that are 200 gross tons and larger, Coast Guard will receive requests to remain in port that both Coast Guard and H.R. harbor masters will jointly review and adjudicate. And within these requests to remain in port, we are looking at heavy weather mooring plans and other mitigation efforts that the vessel owners or masters are going to be implementing to ensure that the vessels remain safely in port and are anticipating or maybe even mitigating any damage that could be caused. So we're looking, usually a heavy weather plan might include a different mooring configuration or different line arrangement to ensure that they are safely, they can remain in berth, given the expected weather conditions. For vessels that are 200 gross tons and smaller, the Coast Guard defers the decision on whether to allow a vessel to remain in port to the Hawaii Department of Transportation. And even though we have this deferral in this plan, we still insist on jointly reviewing and adjudicating the request. So for vessels of all sizes, we are in lockstep with the Coast Guard, and there's not a conflict in the order or the permission to remain or to evacuate.
Okay, and you also mentioned in your response that the bill does not require vessels to evacuate to open sea, but simply requires the vessels to depart the commercial port. What are you doing to facilitate discussions between the owners of these smaller vessels and DLNR to see if there's temporary berth arrangements during emergencies?
So some of the vessels that do operate in our commercial ports could fit in a DOR facility, and I think we've extended offers in the past, even prior to us submitting this bill, to facilitate a discussion with some of the vessel owners and our counterparts at DOR. And I can't see that if they're in the room, but if Chair Chang or even Megan are in the room, I mean, this is something that we've offered to start a conversation with them about what could be permissible in an emergency situation. And we, our offer, I guess, the easiest way to put it is, we haven't been taken up on our offer, but we are happy to do so.
So, you know, this is Hawaii Long Line Association was concerned about this, so maybe that's something that we could pursue again. Finally, testimony from the, I was contacted by the company that runs the dry docks, and they were worried about the impact of this. And you noted that for all storm events and prior to port closure set by U.S. Coast Guard, all the dry dock operators in commercial ports that request to remain in port, and they make a request to remain in port, and the requests are granted. If dry docks and the majority of other vessels continue to follow the established requirements and protocols to request to remain in port, they will be unaffected by this bill should it pass. Is that accurate?
That's a very accurate statement. So historically, vessels were, it is not viable really for them to evacuate. That's the purpose of having the procedure that I described about having a request to remain in port. So they submit their request, it always will have a heavy weather plan. Jointly with the Coast Guard, we review and adjudicate, and we allow them to remain in place, we do not require them to evacuate.
Okay, thank you. So that's Pacific Shipyard, so that's perhaps another conversation you might be able to have as another user that was concerned about this. So I appreciate your response. Thank you, Deputy Director. Any other questions or concerns or comments, members? If not, thank you very much to the testifiers. That's all the measures that we have to discuss and take testimony on. Let's go to the top of the agenda for decision-making. First up, House Bill 211, House Draft 1, relating to stream maintenance. I recommend we defer this. I think it was clear in the testimony that the counties already have the authority to enter into the stream banks if it is filled with material, even if it's on private property, they already have the authority to enter there. And actually, after clearing out the things that are blocking the stream, they can go back and seek recompense from the private property owner. So this bill is not necessary for that. There's also another problem with this bill is that it could be in direct conflict with court decisions, and the city county of Honolulu said that they would have a real problem with it. So we're going to defer this measure, and I'll follow up with the introducer. Questions or concerns, members? If not, let's go on to the next, next measure, House Bill 502. On this one, it was clear from testimony that this would be very difficult to implement, and recommendations from the Land Use Commission said, work with the Office of Planning and Sustainable Development, Office of Planning and Sustainable Development said they would like, are willing to work with the legislature to set up a county-based district boundary amendment process, which I think is probably the best way to pursue, best way to proceed. So I would recommend we defer this measure and take up the offer from the Office of Planning and Sustainable Development to work with the legislature to come up with a bill to set up a county-based district boundary amendment process. Comments or concerns, members? If not, let's go to the next one. House Bill 510, House Draft 1, relating to declaration of water shortage in emergency. I think this is a good bill, I would like to move it forward as is. Questions or concerns, members? If not, Vice Chair for the vote, please?
Voting on House Bill 510, HD1, as is. Chair and Vice Chair vote aye. Representative Bellotti.
Aye.
Representative Cochrane is excused. Representative Hashem. Representative Kahaloa.
Aye.
Representative Peruso.
Aye.
Representative Takayama.
Aye.
Representative Todd. Representative Garcia.
No.
No for Representative Garcia. Representative Shimizu. Reservations for Representative Shimizu. Recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. Next measure is House Bill 511, relating to public lands. I think this is a good bill as is, and I would like to recommend we move this forward as is. Questions or concerns, members? If not, Vice Chair for the vote, please?
Voting on House Bill 511, HD1, as is. Representative Cochrane is excused. Are there any no's or reservations? Hearing none, recommendation adopted.
Thank you. House Bill 661, I would like to move this forward with the amendment from the Office of Planning and Sustainable Development, the amendment from the Department of Land and Natural Resources, which more narrowly defines the scope and impact of this bill. That's very important. And everyone had heard the testimony, this is not going to affect their deliberations on the aquarium fish industry because they currently don't have permits. This is only going to affect those activities that have don't have permits. This is only going to affect those activities that have permits. So my recommendation is to incorporate the amendments from DLNR, from the Office of Planning and Sustainable Development, and we have to correct, uh, what I think is a poor construction in here is, on page 13, line 21 to page 14, line 3, I want to amend the language as follows. So it'll, it'll read, quote, "When an activity of a state or county agency or applicant that has been previously permitted, authorized, or undertaken is challenged as being subject to the requirements of this chapter." I think that construction will avoid confusion. Uh, and, um, technical amendments for clarity, consistency, and style. Those are my recommendations. Please, uh, questions or concerns? And vote your conscience. Questions or concerns? Any questions? Okay, Vice, you want to make a comment?
Yeah, comment.
Comment, please. Go ahead.
Um, I'm, I voted no previously, and I'm going to vote no again, but I really do feel for the Kaanapali, um, business folks and hope that they can find a resolution to the issue. Um, I just, I'm concerned about the precedent that this sets for the future of how we deal with issues that come up with the environmental protection laws, and, um, you know, we can say, oh, this isn't going to affect this or that. It's just for this one thing, but it isn't till it isn't, and I, I don't think, you know, just for the future, um, we can prevent the oops from happening later, you know, so, um, yeah, I feel for the Kaanapali folks, and I hope they can find resolution, but I can't support it through this bill.
That'll be a no for Representative Poipoi. Other questions or concerns, members? First to Representative Peruso.
So Chair, I very much recommend, uh, appreciate your recommendations to narrow the scope in particular, and, um, the work that you have been doing on this measure, but I am also going to be voting no.
Understood. Representative Biladi.
Uh, I just really want to, uh, express my reservations and that I will vote with reservations because I think we need to move this forward to have the conversation, um, and to keep moving and looking for the solution.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Yes, Representative Kahaloa.
Thank you, Chair Tarnas. Thank you for the amendments you're making on this bill. I think there's still some extreme concern in reservations from across the state, but especially in Kona and South Kona, so at this time, I'm going to WR and know that we can keep the conversation going, but I have some very strong reservations about the impacts of this bill.
Understood. Other comments or questions or concerns, members? Representative Shimizu.
Uh, I agree with, um, the previous, um, comments, and I will be voting with reservations also.
Thank you. Okay. If there's no other questions or comments, we'll go ahead for a vote. Vice Chair for the vote, please?
Okay. Um, voting on House Bill 661, HD1 with amendments. Um, Representative Cochrane is excused. I have no votes for Representatives Poipoi and Peruso, with reservations for Representatives Biladi, Kahaloa, Shimizu. Are there any no's or reservations additional? Hearing none. Recommendation adopted.
Thank you. House Bill 969, House Draft 1, relating to waste or disposal facilities. I would like to make technical amendments for clarity, consistency, and style, and I would like to make some amendments to, uh, to correct some of the construction in here of the language. On page 1, lines 14 to 16, the semicolons should be changed to commas to make it clear that the list of landfill units are included under the broader term of waste or disposal facility. And then on page 2, lines 20 to 21, I want to amend the bill to make the definition of waste or disposal facility also applicable to subsection B. So, and we'll be making technical amendments for clarity, consistency, and style. With those amendments, I would like to move it out. Questions or concerns, members? Representative Garcia.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I fully support the intent of the bill, um, and I will be supporting it, but with reservations. The reason being because if this bill is passed, which I would think is a worthy cause, this would most likely force the, the, uh, current landfill on the west side to extend their usage. So for those reasons, with reservations.
Understood. Other questions or concerns, members? If, oh, yes, Representative Shimizu.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I agree. I totally support that we cannot put it over an aquifer, but, um, from the testimony, it just puts this in a, in almost impossible situation. So I will be voting with reservations.
Understood. It's a tough situation. You're right. Other comments or concerns? If not, Vice Chair for the vote, please?
Voting on House Bill 969, HD1 with amendments. Representative Cochrane is excused. I have reservation votes for Representatives Garcia and Shimizu. Are there any additional reservations or no votes? Hearing none. Recommendation adopted.
Thank you very much. Moving on to the next measure, House Bill 732 relating to shoreline management areas. My recommendation is that we adopt the recommended, uh, recommended amendments from the Office of Planning and Sustainable Development in their testimony, and also make technical amendments for clarity, consistency, and style. Questions or concerns, members? If not, Vice Chair for the vote, please?
Voting on House Bill 732, HD1 with amendments. Um, Representative Cochrane is excused. Are there any no's or reservations? Hearing none. Recommendation adopted.
Thank you. House Bill 1137, House Draft 1 relating to restoration of beachlands. I think this is much-needed piece of legislation, and I'd like to move it forward, only making technical amendments for clarity, consistency, and style. Questions or concerns, members? If not, Vice Chair for the vote, please?
Voting on House Bill 1137, HD1 with amendments. Representative Cochrane is excused. Are there any no's or reservations? Hearing none. Recommendation adopted.
Thank you. House Bill 1138, House Draft 1 relating to ocean user safety. I think it's important for everyone here and on Finance Committee and on Ways and Means Committee to understand why DLNR is asking for this. Because of lack of capacity. They need more funding. They need more positions, and they need to be able to hire people that are qualified to do the work. I want to defer this because I don't think this is the way to handle the problem. I think the way to handle it is to provide necessary resources to the Department of Land and Natural Resources. So they've got to do the rulemaking, which is a much better process with consultation through the Chapter 91 process than the legislative process to, to actually give them an emergency rulemaking. They already have, you know, emergency rulemaking for a shorter period of time. It was never meant to be permanent, uh, rulemaking. That's through Chapter 91. I understand the frustration, Chair. Chair Chang. Um, but, um, my recommendation to, uh, my committee here is to defer this measure and that, uh, Chair of Water and Land Committee and, uh, myself and others need to really advocate for additional resources for DLNR. Questions or concerns, members? Comments? We got our work cut out for us. Chair Hashem? Okay, um, so defer House Bill 1138, House Draft 1. Next, House Bill 1141, House Draft 1 relating to updating public land leases issued pursuant to Chapter 171 Hawaii Revised Statutes. I would like to move this forward as is. I acknowledge that this will cause, uh, some, uh, challenges for those with long-term leases, especially in Hilo. I, I know that. Uh, I've, I've talked with them. I understand that. Um, and, you know, the Hilo representative may want to vote against it because of that, and I, and you vote your conscience. That's fine. But I, I do think that it's important to move forward. This was a recommendation coming out of our, uh, own investigative committee here, uh, when we looked at implementation of the auditor's report. So I think it's consistent for us to move this bill forward as is. Questions or concerns, members? If not, Vice Chair for the vote, please?
Voting on House Bill 1141, HD1, as is. Representative Cochrane is excused. Are there any no's or reservations?
Reservations.
Reservations for Representative Garcia. Okay, recommendation adopted.
Okay. House Bill 1348, House Draft 1 relating to public lands. I would like to adopt the amendments recommended by the Department of Land and Natural Resources, uh, and, and move this forward. Uh, for the people of Kauai, uh, I think this is time, and I think this is, uh, timely for us to do this so that they can move forward, uh, regarding the Koke cabins. Questions or concerns? DLNR amendments only on HB 1348, HD1. Questions or concerns? If not, Vice Chair for the vote, please?
Voting on House Bill 1348, HD1 with amendments. Representative Cochrane is excused. Are there any no's or reservations? Hearing none. Recommendation adopted.
Thank you. House Bill 1087, House Draft 1 relating to historic preservation reviews. I recommend we move this forward with the amendments from the Office of Hawaiian Affairs, including what they had told us in oral testimony, which would be to delete the section that transfers the burial councils over to them for now. So we'll take that out of this bill. We'll adopt the other amendment that they have in their testimony. We'll make technical amendments for clarity, consistency, and style. Um, and, uh, if those who weren't here didn't hear it, uh, Office of Hawaiian Affairs is working to develop a resolution, language for a resolution to be introduced for our consideration that would explore the transfer of burial councils and set up a, a group to do that and figure out what the cost would be and all the ramifications of it. So that would be in a separate measure. So that's why we're taking it out of this measure. Um, questions or concerns, members? If not, Vice Chair for the vote, please?
Voting on House Bill 1087, HD1.
Uh, excuse me. Technical amendments as well. I want to make sure. Technical amendments for clarity, consistency, and style. And, and that we're taking out Section 2. We're taking out Section 2 of the bill, uh, and then we're adopting the other amendment, uh, from Oha. So, sorry, go back. Vice Chair for the vote, please?
Okay. Voting on House Bill 1087, HD1 with amendments. Representative Cochrane is excused. Are there any no's or reservations? Reservations for Representative Shimizu. Hearing no others. Recommendation adopted.
Thank you. House Bill 226, House Draft 2 relating to windshield tinting. I'd like to make technical amendments for clarity, consistency, and style, and move this along. Questions or concerns, members? If not, Vice Chair for the vote, please?
Voting on House Bill 226, HD2 with amendments. Representative Cochrane is excused. Are there any no's or reservations? Hearing none. Recommendation adopted.
Thank you. And, uh, House Bill 1159 relating to commercial harbors. Uh, after hearing the responses from the Department of Transportation Harbors, uh, Commercial Harbors Division, uh, from the Deputy Director, I'm comfortable moving this forward with technical amendments only for clarity, consistency, and style. Questions or concerns, members? If not, Vice Chair for the vote, please?
Voting on House Bill 1159, HD1 with amendments. Representative Cochrane is excused. Are there any no's or reservations? Hearing none. Recommendation adopted.
Thank you. Last measure is a measure we deferred to today for decision-making, House Bill 302, House Draft 2 relating to cannabis. After consideration of all of the testimony and discussions, uh, um, with numerous stakeholders, uh, I've decided just to move this forward as is. Questions or concerns, members? If not, Vice Chair for the vote, please?
Voting on House Bill 302, HD2 as is. Representative Cochrane is excused. Are there any no's or reservations? Hearing none. Recommendation adopted.
Thank you. There being no further business before this committee, we are adjourned.